Which is a commercial building.
I would not rule out, however, given the times I've noticed these things, 6:00 AM, 10:00 PM, et cetera, I don't think so. Also, I think the construction, I've been noticing this since August 2013, and I'm not sure if the construction has been, you know, happening since that time. Also, just to let you know, my apartment is on the second floor. It faces the back, so we're on the north side of Seventeenth Street, and so it faces north, towards Eighteenth Street. I face a concrete wall. It's not the most luxurious view, but it affords me typically a quiet existence. So the, it has been alleged before that some of these observances are maybe attributable to garbage truck or something. Quite frankly, I invite somebody over to have coffee in my apartment, you don't hear anything like related to street noise.
I'm sorry, which unit are you?
2B.
2B, and that's where the testing was done, I thought, the informal testing?
Yes, I believe I was asked on Monday, January 5th, if they could test my apartment the following day. I always say yes. I don't believe anybody was there. And I'll just say a little bit about testing. Test results are always interpretable, as all of you, I'm sure, know. You know, to me, I read the response regarding the testing, and it's almost like when you ask your friends how much money they lost in Vegas. Nobody really seems to have lost any money, but somehow those casinos managed to thrive. So, you know, it's kind of like, oh, Anthony Yu wrote down these observances, X, Y, and Z dates here, but no, no, nothing was going on. Well, take it as you wish. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll just act as M C. Alan Firestein of Acoustilog.
Good afternoon, I just have a few points I'd like to make.
Say your name, please.
Alan Firestein from Acoustilog. The ceiling has not been inspected by me since it was finished, but it probably has dramatically reduced voices and music from the first floor. That's why I recommended it. It may have, despite what Mr. Ginsburg said, it may have indeed helped to reduce noises from impact sounds produced in the first floor that would go up to the second floor. I have not tested weight drops since the work was done. I have not seen the videotapes, as we said. Now, I have to point out that the folks from the gym have never been forthright about admitting to hearing or feeling noises right from the beginning, even weights dropped without any kind of pads at all, and they were up in the apartments with me. Now, the commissioner was correct when you said that hearing or feeling a noise or testing it inside the gym is quite a bit different with the ambient noise there, but also it's very different when you're in an apartment because of the setting. You're in an apartment, so you expect to be hearing and feeling quiet. Now, the flooring system that they just mentioned is going to be on the first floor only. It's incorrect that the damping on the first floor will necessarily reduce any vibration that goes up to the building, because any vibration that goes up through the columns or through the walls or out the windows did not be affected by the ceiling or additional mass of any type that's added to the first floor. Now, I heard that the weights are being put down on racks. I don't believe that the racks are shock mounted in any way. Now, I'm sure that putting a weight down on a rack doesn't have the same amount of force and momentum once it's put down on the rack, but without the shock mounting, it can produce a different type of noise, a clicking or banging sound rather than a booming sound. And speaking to Mr. Yu, he is experiencing those types of sounds also, possibly coincidental, but I don't know, because we haven't done that test. None of the tests that we've done have involved a rack. Two more points. If no one's dropping weights, then I find it very difficult to believe that Mr. Yu, whose descriptions to me of what he's hearing and feeling have correlated perfectly with everything I've measured, whether I was there or when I used my monitoring system to measure and record noises there, that he's hearing these things and that they're coming from any type of construction or they're coming from outside. Finally, I looked over the note from CrossFit that I, you probably have seen, describing their informal testing. And they referred to pads that were put down in CrossFit Solus. CrossFit Solus is a job that I originally did. CrossFit Solus was recommended by me to not do any weight dropping on the first floor, but only in the basement, so as to protect the second floor people in that completely commercial office building. It's not a residential building, and that's it.
Thank you. I do have, I guess, a question for you unless the applicant's acoustical engineer is here. Would it be possible to set up a noise monitor? I mean, I even have a noise meter on my iPhone. Would it be possible, I know you wouldn't like that, but still, would it be possible to set up noise monitors both at the gym level and at the apartment 2B, for example, to sort of run for a 24-hour period so we could just kind of check the comparison of activity? That, I mean, part of the problem is with this video that you timestamp, it's true that who knows if, for instance, Mr. Yu's was off by 10 minutes or something in writing it down, and your monitor is, and your video is off by X minutes, and so you can't really tie these together, because it's not very scientific, right? But if you were instead kind of recording during the day for 24 hours, then we'd see kind of what the operation is of the gym and what the, I don't know if that would lead to false results, because you're also on 2B getting honking from the street and you're getting whatever, I don't know if that would work.
Well, you've hit exactly at the right point. You're understanding completely that correlation has to be done exactly within a couple of seconds, or else you can't trust that someone hasn't, like Mr. Ginsburg said, forgotten to spring ahead, fall back with their video timestamp. And you probably need two, but preferably three channels of recording, basically a microphone on the first floor, one in the basement, then one in the second floor, recording simultaneously. It should be done for a longer period of time because of the best behavior method of screwing up one of those tests, like a week or a month, something like that. But it's indeed possible, and it gets done. But it has to be done.
It would be premature to do it now, because we're talking about installing a floor and all of that, but it's still, maybe that's the method of testing.
Yeah, well, I highly recommend that weight drops only occur in the basement on the double plates.
Okay. Okay, any other speakers on this? Why don't you just have the speakers come up instead of a little introduction? It's not vaudeville.
Good afternoon, my name is Charles Rich. I'm the vice president of the Board of Managers, Condominium Board of Managers of 257 West Seventeenth Street. I'd like to read, excuse me, an email that I received this morning from our managing agent. Dear Board, today a piece of terracotta fell through the lobby's ceiling near the credenza at front. Although Ilya Shulberg from Howard Zimmerman's office, the architect, had tested this area while we were doing the common areas between hallways, I believe the renovations and possibly work from Brick may have dislodged the terracotta. I've sent an email to Ilya and the contractor who did the work, asking them to come out and take a look. I will also call Ilya in a few minutes as well. However, want to let you know that I'm on top of it. Regards, Mindy. Mindy's our managing agent. You may have noted previously that we had some issues quite some time ago with terracotta that had been dislodged. Putting aside the issue of whether it's a common area or not, this is a concern, and we went through a process by which all of the hallways, 2 through 9, we had gone into any exposed ceilings and reinforced that to make sure something like that wouldn't happen again. But unfortunately, I have to report this to you. One thing I want to point out here is that in doing some checking, I noticed on Brick's site that they're opening up a new facility in the Grand Central Terminal area. I don't know when it's opening or any other details, but frankly, I found that very, very irritating and annoying, not because they're opening up another facility, but they chose to do the renovations and alterations, not stop classes, take an extraordinarily long period of time just to do the ceiling, not close their business, yet they have the capital to open a new facility. We've been living with this since September 2013. The BSA only began hearing the application in July, and here it is January of 2015. You'll forgive me if I seem peeved, because this has just been going on for too long. As noted by some of my neighbors, the complaints still have continued. And one of the things I wish to note is it appears that Wilson Estrick, who is the expert back in the summer, who was called in, doesn't appear to be involved in the process anymore, which would make that be the third or fourth acoustical expert that the folks from Brick have engaged with. I also wanted to note that it appears as if this floor procedure will require some level of manual supervision, and I thought it was quite clear that what the BSA was looking for was a permanent solution, which would not require any human intervention to monitor it, because things happen over time. Lastly, I note in passing that Room and Board, which is now open adjacent to our building, is a perfectly lovely furniture store, not unlike West Elm or many others. It's quite quiet, they finished their construction, and having passed through what was formerly the Barney's Warehouse, where this building is located, there's a long hallway that physically separates any of Room and Board space from our building. So there's a very substantial air pocket. Lastly, Twitter has not yet moved in, so I don't know what tweeting construction is going on, but I assure you, there's nothing substantial that I can hear, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Susan Gomes, apartment 2A, right above the gym. I've been here countless times now. This is, I think, my number four, so I appreciate everyone coming back again, but we still don't have resolution. And I'm not going to speak to everything that everybody else has said, I'm not going to repeat myself from previous meetings. What I'm going to speak to is the spirit of cooperation that I don't think has ever existed, that I don't think exists to this day. From day one, they denied that we had a problem. They blamed everything, they blamed us, they said we were making it up, they blamed construction, they blamed things that didn't exist. Then, all of a sudden, they had to change apart, yeah, there's a problem. Then they didn't come up with a solution. Every solution, including the ceiling, came from our side. They didn't come up with the ceiling, they didn't even want to do the ceiling. In fact, you're the ones that suggested that they had to do it and demanded it. You actually suggested and asked them, would you be willing to shut down your business until this is done to get it right? I remember that question, it was in August or September, and I was here, and no one was forced to actually answer that. They weren't forced to close. Their ceiling took an extraordinary amount of time, because they didn't want to be disrupted in their day-to-day lives and their activities. Really? Really? Because I'm thinking that after 18 months, we didn't want to be either. And yet, there it was. They were allowed to carry on. I don't understand, as an individual in this city, why they're allowed to do whatever's at best for them, but never compromise to what's best for the people in the building. Now, there's a floor that's not going to be the same floor that they agreed to testing already? And you even suggested, Marjorie, that at the time when they brought up the floor, and that was put on hold because they had to do the ceiling first now, you suggested it's going to be this iterative process of testing it and going back and going back, and that was a permanent floor solution. You can, we can all look it up in the data from the past meetings, but that was the suggestion, not something temporary and not something in spaces. It was across the whole floor, and Alan, back in August or September, discussed with you that it needed to be in the basement as well, not just on the edges. Whatever's going on, they're backtracking again. This is not the spirit of cooperation. They keep talking about how they want to be great neighbors. They haven't once offered to do something just because it's the right thing to do. And after 18 months, we're all sick of being here, and we're sick of living with it. I heard it last night. I wrote you a letter last week, because the last time I was here, a few months ago, when we were invited to speak, that, they said how they didn't drop anything. I don't know what fuds I'm hearing. I'm not going to speak to whether it's a weight or what level weight or what, how they dropped it or whatever else. Maybe it's them friggin' jumping, I don't know. But we're still hearing it, and there's been no spirit of cooperation to say, yeah, we need to get this right for you. And now they're going to open another gym? Well, God bless. Thank you.
Just want to note that the ceiling has been installed, and that the flooring will be a permanent solution, not a temporary solution.
Hi.
Hi.
Marty Kelson, apartment 2D. Pretty much everyone has said what I wanted to say. Anthony, in terms of frequency. Charles, in terms of Room and Board being a quiet neighbor now that construction is through and that they're insulated. They removed plate glass window in order to move their furniture in, and now they're using an ordinary-sized OSHA-approved exit door that faces Seventeenth Street. The fact that the first gentleman, Mr. Perlmutter, came up here and said that we're not hearing noise on Saturday mornings, my wife and child and myself, we, I guess, we're insane. I guess we're not hearing any noises. I'm not being woken up in my bed, I'm not having my son call from his room, Dad, they're throwing weights again. Why should he even know about this? Why should the glass in my kitchen cabinets be rattling? My wife, my child, they're more sensitive to the noise, but every once in a while, I work at home, if I'm not traveling, and it seems that there's a new vibration. I feel that, to your point, that the vibration seems to be wider, more spread out, rather than just the impacts that I was hearing before. But every once in a while, I do send my email, they're throwing weights again, I'm hearing loud bangs, I'm getting the vibration. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I have Mr. Perlmutter come back, just to ask about the?
We'd like to respond specifically to some of the areas, clear areas that were made.
Tracks. I don't want to go back and forth about who hears.
No, we're not going to go back and forth on that.
But I just want to know whether the racks are shock mounted.
Jerry Perlmutter? Yes, ma'am, 100%. The racks are not only on top of one inch of rubber, they are actually bolted not to the wall or to the subflooring, they're bolted to the spring-isolated flooring that we have in place that's fully disconnected from the walls. It is the flooring that we've recognized that isn't doing the job against the larger dropping, but to say that it's not vibration dampened would be impossible. It's on a four-inch slab, one inch of rubber with a six-inch spring caster.
The problem is, it's a slab that's not floating properly, and then it's only on one inch of rubber, so maybe in the interest of this whole issue about the racks as being potentially the source of the vibration, maybe you get those lifted up onto something thicker. Take a look at another, another way of mounting the racks?
That's, that's a simple fix for us.
Okay, so, you know, in the meantime, because obviously, they're going to ultimately sit on top of a much better floor, but in the meantime, an inch doesn't sound like much, especially on top of a bad floor.
Yes, ma'am. If I could just say that in correspondence to any of the complaints we've received, generally, they never, they never correlate to that action of placing the weight onto the rack, but we will still take the measure.
Right, I understand, but, you know, it's a very unscientific system of your videos versus Mr., you know, the neighbors writing down exactly when they hear it, because none of us are official timekeepers, right? You would really need to have two people on radio in communication at the same time to know that they're tracking.
Sure thing. And then just in response to the videotape about having the exact minute, that's why we have all of the hours before and after, that you would see the same action.
I see, okay.
On the issue of the spirit of cooperation that was mentioned, as you know, the Residential Condominium instituted a lawsuit, the spirit of cooperation, at the outset of, prior to the, this hearing and prior to the case being filed. Jeffrey Kaplan is the attorney for Brick, and he'd like to just specifically mention a few items that were brought up. And then I'll come back just for a few short remarks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jeffrey Kaplan, I'm with Schwartz Levine and Kaplan. I represent the applicant in the pending Supreme Court matter. I work with my counterpart, Jay Ginsburg, who is the plaintiff's attorney in that matter. I just wanted to address some of Mr. Ginsburg's, what I feel are inaccurate comments with respect certainly to weights which are being used at the facility. My clients have discussed countless times with me that no one at the facility is dropping 180-pound weights. The culture at the facility limits the amount of weight being used by the gym members to much less than that, and I think it's also important for the board to know that when we're doing testing, which certainly, there's a lot of cooperation with Mr. Ginsburg and the facilitation of all of these tests, with the exception of informal tests, which we're both sometimes allowed to enter the apartments to do informal testing, but when we are getting together to schedule and conduct formal testing, the weights are deliberately dropped in an attempt to try to cause some sort of a noise that can be measured by Mr. Firestein and certainly our own counterpart, who is an acoustical engineer. And as the board knows, those tests, I'm sure, will be scheduled quite soon with Mr. Ginsburg, so we can, again, test the efficacy of the new ceiling. I was enlightened to hear from Mr. Yu that he feels there has been some improvement. To what extent, he's willing to suggest that improvement's been great, I don't know. But I certainly know that I am the go-between from Mr. Ginsburg, who is very familiar with the court order, the interim temporary order that was entered in the Supreme Court, which requires that the plaintiff in that action give us notice of noise complaints. So when there is a noise complaint, with the rare exception, I believe recently, when some were submitted directly to the board by Mr. Yu and possibly others, those complaints go through Mr. Ginsburg to me directly and then on to my clients, so I'm intimately familiar with the number of complaints, the frequency of complaints, normally who they come from and when they occur. And I can indicate to the board that the number of complaints is down incredibly dramatically over the last several months. There are now periods of weeks that go by where I do not receive a single complaint from Mr. Ginsburg with respect to a noise that's occurred at the facility. I was somewhat disheartened today to hear that not only are my clients now being blamed with every boom that occurs during any period of time, but now we're being blamed for the loss of ceiling tiles in the foyer. I certainly hope we don't end up getting blamed for a plumbing problem on the fifth floor also, but those are the kinds of things that certainly concern me as someone who has to receive these complaints and deal with them. I also want to address Mr. Ginsburg's comment that it's a rare instance when we supply footage. There are security cameras which monitor every aspect of the facility that my clients operate, and it's inaccurate for Mr. Ginsburg to state anything other than that when he requests footage, we go to great lengths to provide that. I think what the board should know is that it's actually a rare instance when Mr. Ginsburg will require the footage, and then great lengths will be undertaken to provide him with that footage when he does ask for it. And I know my clients went out of their way again today to provide you with some footage, and you suggested that it might even be more helpful to have some sound testing done, and as I indicated, that's something that we'll certainly take care of. There certainly is an air of cooperation on my client's parts and on the lawyer's parts to try to address the complaints and what we feel are some phantom complaints that certainly we're being blamed for unjustly going forward. Thank you very much.
But you can understand how, after living for a long time with a lot of noise, a person becomes supersensitized to the noise and everything sounds like it's coming from the place you've, so, up until we have a kind of technological seal on this place, it's going to be difficult to say that it's not coming from you unless you're really not functioning that day.
Certainly, and that's, that's an area that we discuss together quite frequently.
Only mice running in the space.
We discuss that with our clients quite frequently, and certainly, the air of, the spirit is to cooperate and find a solution that works for the members, for the owners, and to suggest otherwise is just inaccurate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Angelino, again for Brick, directed to Mr. Firestein's comments about whether or not the flooring that we are looking at will work. He mentioned that he was a consultant for CrossFit Solus, which is one of the models that we are using. What he didn't mention, what I understand is a fact, and he could correct me, is that he was replaced as the acoustical engineer for that job by Criterion, which is our acoustical engineer, which completed the job and which established the floor. So I wanted the board, and I wanted the record to show that. If I'm incorrect, I could be corrected on that, but that's my understanding. As far as ambient noise is concerned, I know that Mr. Rich took pains to show that the new commercial tenants next door, who went through, one, a long construction period, and the other undergoing a construction period, how that couldn't possibly be the source of any noise, even though they share the same eastern party wall. Just as we are a condominium sharing a wall below them, they are a condominium or in other type of ownership, also sharing a party wall, and it's possible that ambient noise could come from them. Again, we're not blaming, placing the blame on other things, but as a New Yorker, as a lifelong New Yorker, and I'm very happy to see other people coming from other states helping to pay our taxes in New York, but as a lifelong New Yorker, living in the center city for the, all of my life, there is a number of ambient noises that come from all over, and it is very difficult sometimes to pinpoint where they come from. I think that the, what we're heading towards is, now that we've completed the ceiling, completing the flooring, and then it could be verified by testing, and the board, if it so wishes, can come to the site, because otherwise, we're never going to hear a stopping while we're in a litigation post with the other side. We're never going to hear complaints stopped, as long as the other side thinks there's an advantage to make complaints. So it's got to, one, there's got to be an objective testing that shows, we know that we're way under New York City noise codes, now it's a question of getting the sound below a level that nobody is impacted from it. And that's what we're aiming towards, and we think that once the floor is in place, the testing can begin, and if the board wants to, can visit the site themselves during testing to objectively make their own decision on whether or not the sound situation has been cured at Brick. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
One question, regarding the vibration, I don't recall exactly, but was there testing done with seismographs also? Because I guess at a certain level, you could still feel vibration, and it wouldn't be audible noise.
Yeah, as you know, Shen Milson is involved in this project. It was stated by the opposition that they were no longer involved, they are still involved in the project. I don't know, did they use seismic?
Wilson Eric.
I'm sorry, Wilson Eric is still under, in the project, and I can find that information and get back to you.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, we need to keep moving. So you're ready to start on flooring materials, right? On flooring installation, so we need a submission immediately on the proposed flooring, and if Criterion could also submit their test results on that other site, that would be good? On Solus, yeah. And any other information they have about the success of this flooring? Okay, so, we need a submission kind of right away, you've already selected it, right? So if you could submit it even, if you already have the information, I don't see why you couldn't submit it by the end of the week, right?
I don't, I don't think I can.
What? I'm sorry.
I have, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. But I'd like to have another week to do that.
Okay, so, so another week, as in the 20th? Today's the 13th? The 20th to submit?
That's two more days.
Yeah, that's two more days. So you want till, you want longer than that to submit?
Yes.
Why do you need longer than that to submit?
I'm filing three cases this week.
Ah, well, it's actually, frankly, this could come from the owner.
I understand.
It doesn't need to be on your letterhead.
But I'd like to, I'd like to look at it.
Yeah.
We want to get it right.
How about we compromise on that? How about till the 22nd of Fe, of January?
That's fine.
Okay. Just because we want to get started, we don't want to have an excuse that you didn't order the materials and all that stuff.
I have no problem.
Okay, and also, I assume there's been discussion with a contractor, maybe it's the same guy who's doing the seal, I don't know. So how long will it take to install, like how will you be doing it and what sections and so on?
We can give you a timetable.
And the other thing is, you know, how does it isolate from the walls and the columns? That's critical. So details on that, they're probably standard details, right?
And I think also, once this is all in, if you do testing on the first floor and in the cellar, and if you have portions of the cellar where the flooring is not installed, there may be a requirement to limit. there may be a requirement to limit use of that cellar space for weights.
Right.
Because I know the owner said that he was not going to do the entire floor. I just have some concerns about that.
Yeah. Another question is, you know, let's just say, because we don't know and we don't have experience with this flooring and so on, that in the end, you could, you, one of two things. You don't have any weight dropping permitted ever, but nevertheless, there's the sort of the vibrations that are caused by even with an isolated rack, there's still vibration caused for whatever reason. It might mean that the weight activities go down to the cellar. I mean, in the end, that may be the solution, because if you can't isolate the first floor adequately, there's still the cellar. I mean, and I don't know how, right?
Which is always lower.
Right. So, you know, we don't know how this is going, and obviously you have your layout working for your classes, but ideally, nobody's going to know about this gym on the second floor after this is all done, right? They will forget that there's a gym, that they're living on the second floor. That's the goal, right?
Thank you.
Just be a bad memory. Okay. So, okay, so we need a submission, hopefully with all those details and everything, on the 22nd of January?
Mm-hmm.
And then, could you come back for, let's see, could you come back on February 3rd so we keep up the discussion? We just want to move this along, that's why.
Understood.
Okay.
It's unlikely that the work on the flooring will be completed by then.
No, it won't be done, but we want to see that the contractor...
We'll have the testing on the ceiling by then.
Yeah, and also, we want to see that the contractor's been hired, that there's a construction schedule, all that stuff. So it's kind of like what we've been doing in the past is, every time you get something, we want it instead of waiting for an official submission deadline.
Okay, I would ask the board if they could ask the other side if they have submissions to do it the way counsel and the court had suggested, that they go through the different attorneys, rather than submitting at the last minute to the board where I have to respond on a Friday or...
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, so, in other words, in terms of the court order, which was to submit noise reports or complaints directly to counsel?
Yes.
Was that a rule? Okay, is that so noted by, yes, please do it according to what you've been directed to do, but we can get a copy, right?
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Hold on one second.
We want the opposition to have an opportunity to submit their...
Yes.
Okay, so then maybe we should bump it up.
Okay, okay. So we bumped, so they submit on the 22nd, opposition on the 29th?
I ask you to clarify.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes, please come. Quickly.
Charles Rich again. I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure with communication, that it occurred in the same fashion both ways. CrossFit, I'm sure it was well-intentioned, but it asked one of our union owners to report to them directly whenever they heard a sound, which meant actually that the reports didn't go through counsel, so the assumption perhaps was there wasn't an issue, but it was merely that an owner was saying, "Okay, I'll just call you," Jared.
Oh, I see, it wasn't...
So, you know, it didn't go through the proper channels.
Okay, the tricky part is, and you're in litigation, so you have...
That was a personal...
Yes, it's a personal, I see, yeah.
He's texting us, letting us know.
Mm-hmm. Right.
It's just...
Right, can I have counsel for the owners come up, please? Because the idea is that we're not trying to complicate this. Please, please come. Thank you. So, the issue is, we're trying to resolve the situation. So if you've got a neighbor upstairs who, at 10:15 hears a noise, they actually should be communicating immediately with Brick that it's 10:15 and I just heard a noise, so that Brick can say, "Who's dropping a weight? Who's doing what they're not, what's the source of the noise?" If we go through this whole channel, it sort of obfuscates the possibility of determining what the source, you see? So I don't know really whether you want to stand on the ceremony of the court in this case. You can advise your client however you want, but what we're trying to do is resolve it, and if...
Right, for the record, I don't think counsel was really involved in those communications. I wasn't aware of any. The communications regarding noise complaints that I'm aware of, with the exception of, I think, the letter from Mr. Yu and one of the other members that was sent directly to you, was the first occasion that noise complaints ever came through any source other than directly from Mr. Ginsburg, who he and I both appreciate and understand the auspices of the court's order, and I'm sure will continue to follow that court order. As far as any other...
So you should work this out yourselves, but I do think that it's okay for an upstairs neighbor to send a text to a Mr. Paul Mutter and say, "I just heard a noise," so that they can run around and look.
As counsel, I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Ginsburg. If I'm ever in receipt of those types of notices, you and I have a very good working relationship. We email each other all the time, and I'll certainly move those right along to Mr. Ginsburg.
Okay, play nicely in the sandbox.
In the spirit of cooperation.
My cell phone's on Facebook, so I don't...
There you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So we just needed to modify the schedule a little bit. So you'll submit on the 22nd what you have on the flooring materials.
Right.
Opposition can submit on the 3rd, no, sorry, on the 29th then, for hearing on February 10th. For next...
10th?
10th, yeah.
Okay, yeah, 10th.
And again, any other material you get as you go, please submit to us and we see your neighbors.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, and now we're going to take a break, because we desperately need one. 20 minutes, we'll be back at 2:00. Thank you.
Zoom at 2:00.
(laughter)
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 Which one do you want to come up?
All right, yeah.
(laughter)
(laughter)
Everyone here? Everyone on? Mic's on?
Mic's on.
Ready? Okay. Okay, we're back on the record for the Board of State and City Fields Public Hearing for January 13, 2015. We'll continue with the zoning calendar, item number 17, 8-14BZ, 1824 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Leira J. Altman from the Law Office of Leira J. Altman. I requested an adjournment on this application until February 24th.
That's good. Okay, so a submission on February 10th, is that right?
Please.
Okay. Item number 18, 2514BZ, 1601, 1623 Avenue J, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Leira J. Altman from the Law Office of Leira J. Altman. We did attend your executive session yesterday, heard your comments. First, I should let you know I do have revised plans on pages A102 and A204. We saw your comments, we made those revisions already, and we will be submitting those to your board after this hearing, of course.
Remind me, what were the revisions that you made?
The revisions were on the section where terrace was written, and it should have said roof or should have said nothing. It was just a carryover from the previous set.
Mm-hmm.
And the addition of the 16-foot side yard on the first floor plan per Commissioner Hanksen.
Okay, great.
So we do have that prepared, and with us today, in response to your question as far as why we couldn't vertically enlarge the building, is Daniel Huberger from Dattner's.
Mm-hmm.
I will tell you that I know he has another meeting to get to, so...
Okay, he has to talk really fast.
He's going to try to talk quickly for you.
Yes. And I think actually that was a question from opposition, not from us.
Correct. Good afternoon, I'm Daniel Huberger from Dattner Architects. We're the architects for this project. The question was why we did not elect simply to add three floors to the top of the existing building rather than doing an addition next to the building. In fact, early on in the planning process, we did consider the option of adding to the top of the building. We, as architects, reviewed it for its programmatic impact, and our structural and mechanical engineers reviewed it in terms of their disciplines. And what we found is that this was simply not feasible. The existing building was built in 1958. It was not built to take the additional load of what would probably be three extra floors. It's a four-story building. It was not built to be able to resist the seismic forces that are now a requirement of the New York City Structural Code. And although it might be technically possible to do it, the amount of invasive destruction and transformation of the structure would mean that, in effect, the building would have to be vacated during the work. And this was simply not feasible for the school to relocate while this work was being done. To go into a little more detail, the kinds of structural things that you have to deal with are really twofold. One are the vertical loads, weight, gravity, and the others are the side-to-side load, wind, earthquake, seismic requirements. In terms of the gravity loads alone, all of the columns in the building would have to be exposed, which means destruction of walls and ceilings and things like that. They would have to receive welded plates, be reinforced, all the way from the roof all the way down to the cellar. Each column is resting on a foundation, on a footing, which is located below the cellar slab. We would have to open up the cellar slab, shore up the foundation for stability, and then increase the size of the footings, and then close up the slab. Some of these columns are landing in the middle of mechanical rooms where we have equipment. It would just simply not be possible to do that. And finally, the seismic loads, which are probably involve the greatest amount of work, as you probably know, the way the lateral forces, the side-to-side forces are dealt with are either with cross bracing or with concrete shear walls. These typically go from the top of the building all the way down to the cellar. That means we would have about a dozen of these new walls in the space, which would, of course, have a huge impact on the program and would require selective demolition on every single floor, and again, all the way down to the foundation level, involving the opening up the ground floor slab, putting in new foundations below those walls, et cetera. And I haven't even gotten into some of the other issues, which are the relocation of the mechanical equipment on the roof, the extension of the stairs and elevator shafts, and so on and so forth. In short, while this might be, in theory, possible, as a practical matter, it simply is a non-starter. And then, in final analysis, even if all of this was theoretically possible, what would we end up with? We'd have a seven-story building plus two levels below grade with 800 high school kids in it, going up nine floors of classrooms, up and down. Simply doesn't work for a school. We'd also be limited to the existing footprint of the building with its stairs and its cores, and a lot of the spaces that are part of our new program, the enlarged Batem Dras, the student commons, the larger common areas, could not be realized in this floor plan. So the end product, even if it was theoretically possible to build, would be inadequate to meet the needs of the school.
Okay. You said that you'd end up with a seven-story building with 800 kids. That doesn't work. Other than the common areas, why wouldn't it work?
Because of the vertical circulation. You'd just simply be asking kids to climb seven to nine floors between classes. It's just not realistic.
Because of the nature of the different classes that go on at different times, they're traveling?
Correct. Right, typically you have five minutes between classes, you have to get from one part of the building to the other. You know, even if you double that time, climbing nine floors, academic floors, which are tall floors, it's just not realistic.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. Um, one second. Wait, wait, wait. I just need to make sure that, Ms. Altman, is that all you wanted to address, or there were other...
One other item I would like to bring to your board's attention. By shifting the building towards Avenue J, as was done, we've actually created a side yard problem adjacent to the library. We just want to confirm with your board, and I assume we will be doing so with the examiner or with the counsel, that the current side yard objection would adequately cover that.
And what's the language in the side yard objection at the moment? Because you have, oh, it's still under the side yard, but it was a different number.
Instead of being, the side yard is under as far as the 10% of the aggregate with the street walls on the northernmost side, but by shifting the building south towards the library, we had an eight-foot side yard there that was a required eight-foot side yard. We no longer have that eight-foot side yard.
Mm-hmm.
So I would just want to confirm that that is acceptable. If not, we will, of course, be providing your board with a revised objection sheet, adding a second side yard objection.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. So now we're getting speakers.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Stuart Klein. I'm an attorney, and I represent a number of neighbors within the zone of interest...
Who are the neighbors?
I will describe them in a moment. Within the zone of interest as defined in the matter of SOHO versus State Liquor Authority. They include, but are not limited to, the gold bounds, the fruit handlers, and the paleys who previously testified before you.
Who live where?
Who live, the paleys live...
I know where the paleys live. Where do the gold bounds live?
They live within, I believe, 400 feet of the perimeter of the location.
Do they live adjacent or across the street from the property?
I believe they're across the street. Right next, I'm sorry. I apologize. In any event, no matter what the footage is, there certainly are parties in interest to this matter, and I believe I do have the right to speak on their behalf for the board. Let me begin by saying that the only thing addressed today was the impossibility, or the alleged impossibility, of constructing an additional three floors on the seven-story building. But I think that's, that shows the lack of imagination that's infused itself throughout this entire procedure. There are a number of ways this can be handled. It doesn't have to be handled, in fact, I think it would probably be a profoundly bad idea to try and force an additional three stories on the current four-story building. But I would like to thank the board for the care and attentions paid and the concern it showed, shown for the people in the very, very lovely residential area immediately to the north of this location. And I also want you to understand that we're not opposed, or my clients are not opposed, to yeshiva using, getting a variance in this. They hope to expand, they wish it expands, they're very, very happy with the institution's history. But what they are concerned is how they're handling this particular project. Now, you asked the last time, or the board asked last time, why they couldn't lower the three feet of the northwest building, the new northwest building, so it at least doesn't loom over the R5-R2 district. The response was twofold. One, that they would widen the yard from eight feet to 16 feet, and the second was that they couldn't do it because it would cause undefined circulation problems. But the architect had committed to looking into that. He has not. My suggestion would be that instead of conceivably lowering the subcellar, if in fact it proves a difficult task, that one floor, one foot be taken away from each floor, because the floors as they're now arranged are 14, 15, and 13 feet, taking away one foot from each floor would accomplish the same thing. There's no use in any of those three floors that merit 14-foot ceilings, even with air-conditioning systems in them. Or reducing the thickness of the floor plates. The floor plates are not defined or dimensioned in the plans, and I respectfully refer you to A203.0A that illustrates that fact. Also, the claim was that the area in question does not insinuate itself into the R2 district. That is not true, because you look at drawing number Z100.0A. In fact, a large portion of that building is in fact in the R2 district. Once again, it's not dimensioned, but I would imagine if the scale drawings, they were talking about somewhere in the area of 25 to 30 feet. I also don't understand, instead of shifting some of the uses from the northern side of the lot, why we can't build the Batem Dras building, which is a single-story structure, new structure, why can't be moved to a second floor over the existing building closer to Avenue J? The rabbi in meetings with one or two people in the neighborhood said that this was structurally difficult, but beyond that conclusory statement, there was no reason given why it can't be put in. And it would certainly be easy to put in. I would imagine they've done borings, and they've done testings, and they've done corings of the current building in order to draft these plans, and they have a pretty good idea what has to be done in order to support that one-story structure so a second story could be put on top of that one-story structure. That would literally eliminate this entire one-story building from the R2 zone. And I don't understand why that was explored. I would ask you to please look at drawing PD100.0A. You can fill in that entire empty area, which is just south of the new one-story structure, or alternatively, put it on the existing one-story building, and you would open up that entire area next to the R2 zone, or in the R2 zone. Also, you could conceivably, as an alternative, take the third floor from the new building on the northwest side, which consists of a tech lab, a small office, and an art room, and in like manner, shift that over instead of the Bat Midrash building to the second floor, or make a second floor, on that existing one-story building. All of this would effectively shift the bulk and the massing over to the Avenue J, and I haven't heard one reason articulated as to why any of those alternatives cannot be done. And that would give great relief to the surrounding neighborhood, and I believe it would probably make the school function better, because you wouldn't have to walk these long corridors from one building to the other. Now, the other, the remaining issues, I think that's very, very important to consider, and they said they would consider it, however they did not. The two other issues, three other issues that appear are, to me, are, one, there are no real roof plans. The bulkhead's not dimensioned. None of the mechanical equipment is cited, the size of the mechanical equipment, where the vents are going to be, or any of that stuff. We have no idea whether this is going to insinuate itself into the residential side of the block, or whether it's going to be pointed the other way. I've never seen plans which don't have some idea in the plans of where the mechanical equipment is going to be. The two other remaining issues are, one, there was a summer camp that was used, that used the location for a number of years. Ms. Altman said that they stopped in 2013 and cannot use it because there's no longer pool air. I would venture to guess that the vast majority of summer camps in Brooklyn don't have pools, so that certainly does not prevent them from using it as a summer camp in the future. The problem with the summer camp was that the buses that drop the kids off and pick the kids up in the afternoon would line up and idle on 17th Street, block crosswalks, block driveways, and become a general annoyance to the people who are there. So if, in fact, there's going to be a resolution on this, I would like that to be put in the resolution, that there will be no summer camps at the location. Also, something that was not mentioned in any of the submissions, and I admit that I didn't have a chance to review all of the files here, I was only retained about a week and a half ago, Turo College uses this site at night. In fact, they've used it for a number of their students, for their men's school in Brooklyn, which is right across the street, and I don't believe any of the students from Turo College. Classes normally start at 5:55 and I believe end at 7 o'clock. None of those were included in the EAS, or in the 700 students that were planned, or in the number of additional cars that would come into the neighborhood, because these are mostly, you know, older children who are going to be, you know, driving there, or young adults, or continuing education people. Nothing was mentioned as to Turo College, and I'd like to make sure that, A, it's not going to be used in the future for Turo College or any other college at night, and that, B, that be in the resolution. And the final two issues are, and I apologize, I added an issue as I went along. One, there's been a continuing problem with the garbage, and there should be some commitment by the yeshiva to store their garbage, as many facilities have in the past, and it's always been found in the resolution, to store their garbage until it's removed for pickup. And again, finally, with this car issue. The rabbi, very affirmatively and very emotionally stated to you the last time, that they will spend whatever it takes, as long as what it takes is reasonable, monies to ensure that the car problem has been resolved. But that's a little too little and a little too late. This problem has been there for years and years and years, and they're first starting to address it. And as a matter of fact, as of last week, and I'll bring in pictures, there were still cars parked on campus, there were cars parking across the driveway. So obviously, the message, to the extent that it actually exists, has not been getting to the students or the people who occupy the space. So, once again, I believe there can be a number of very, very imaginative ways that can be used to change the mass on this building. I believe that there has to be some concern over the Turo College and the use of any possible summer camp, and I believe there has to be some concern or some proof that, in fact, these alternative, and I believe somewhat more imaginative, ways of dealing with this problem, why they cannot, in fact, be put into effect. There's a great deal, particularly with this one-story building that exists, if you look at the plans, there's a great deal of construction that's going to be taking place around it. I would imagine there's going to be a great deal of additional added foundation, at least to one side, and I don't understand why, in the course of doing that, if necessary, they couldn't add additional underpinning or step-back footing of any type, which would support a second floor at that building, which will move one of those buildings entirely to the south, towards Avenue J, give them greater functionality, and actually free up that R2 zone. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Yeah, my name is Saul Goldbaum. I was here about a last meeting, and the chair asked us to have only one person representing the block, so here I am. The Paleys are here with me, they're my next-door neighbors, just to tell you a little history of what happened from the last meeting. I had reached out, as we had discussed, the rabbi was kind enough to say he'd make a meeting with the block. I reached out to the rabbi to set up that meeting, and he happened to have done this in a very silly manner, and I gave copies of the emails back and forth. He insisted on having this meeting on Sunday of Hanukkah, which was offensive to the entire block, which is primarily Orthodox. The Paleys actually are conservative, but there are Jewish people on the block. It turned out, we asked him numerous times to change that. He refused to do that. At the end of the day, we finally had the meeting the following Sunday. We had a block meeting prior to that, where the vast majority... I have a second copy if that's helpful.
Yeah.
The vast majority of the block joined us at a meeting. I explained to them what the yeshiva proposed to do. There were several people, really, everyone in the block, and I think it was articulated by Mr. Klein, I'm not going to reiterate what he said. The bottom line was, the block is not opposed to the yeshiva expanding as was articulated. The bottom line is, we just don't understand why they can't, you know, build on the existing structures, as was spoken to by Mr. Klein. After the meeting, we had a meeting with the yeshiva. I listed out in this email that I sent to the rabbi last Thursday, because he had offered a follow-up meeting this past Sunday, I listed out 17 items that were brought up at the meeting. I could tell you that the meeting, for the most part, got us pretty much nowhere, it was just a bunch of people yelling and screaming, and I said, "There's no point in having another meeting if there's not going to be something that comes out of a meeting." To their credit, they did fix the fence that had been broken since about four months ago. That happened miraculously this past week. Additionally, the last day, and I mean literally the last day, all of a sudden, the parking of the cars that were on the lawns of these houses, that made a tremendous eye sore for the block, has all of a sudden stopped. Again, I listed out all the items, there was a house on the block that was burnt, that they bought, one of the two properties, it took them five years to take it down. The block is very against the fact that the garbage is always out, and we can go through the items, I think that's what is there. And I don't want to bother the board, you know, any longer, but I think it's very clear what our position is, and we ask you to please consider it.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Ms. Altman?
It's okay, I'm going to ask the doctor just to speak.
Yeah, he can sit, stay seated.
I'm Dr. Herbert Paley. I live immediately north of the yeshiva's property. We have a problem with sunlight, and the yeshiva recently took down the property immediately adjacent to us, and we have it now. We like to still have some of it. Now, we don't object to students, even when they have a fire drill, they come in front of our house, they're very respectful. We do not have a front fence, and the students respect my front lawn. And perhaps the yeshiva could do without a fence in the territory that they're going to build on, and have their students respect their lawn also, and that would further beautify the block. Also, there was once a mention of a private garbage collection. No, that's expensive, it's all right. But, now, and another thing, the yeshiva calculated how much space each student would require. I don't know, that's the three-foot personal space or what, but there's an enormous amount of space in the plans that they have, and the yeshiva has been not transparent at all about what they're going to do with this space. You know, I don't... Well, I know they're... They might have a catering... I have no idea. I never heard that. But what they do with it doesn't pertain to the education of the yeshiva students or even of the Turo students that are across the street. And, you know, you've seen pictures, you know, the so-called campus of Turo Yeshiva is one of the most heavily trafficked streets in Brooklyn. It's just the street of Avenue J. Now, they could have some open territory, there'd be a real campus toward my house, which would be nice. That'd be beautiful. Have some beautiful green territory and have them support themselves there, or just sit out and relax during lunch. That'd be very nice for the students. And in addition, which I wouldn't mind at all, to the neighborhood, if they respect the green, you know? It would be very nice if they moved their buildings further south and leave a little space near me.
I was just, I forgot one other thing. I know the board's requested, approximately 50% of the block has contributed to the cost of the attorney. So it's not just a few people on the block, it's a lot of the block beyond that wishes they could contribute, and they just can't afford to help out.
I just have a question, though, in terms of adjacencies. I see that the Paleys are immediately adjacent...
I'm right next to the Paleys.
But you're next door to...
Toward the north end.
Towards the north, so one house away from...
Correct.
So what's the impact on you, being one... I mean, the Paleys share a lot on...
The impact is really on the entire block. There's a tremendous...
But how?
They block my driveway every single morning. Every single morning, there's someone blocking...
So that has to do with traffic and...
Traffic, but even in general, you're talking about, this is just, the entire block, and one of the big things that the people felt on the block was it would hurt the values of the block, the quality of life, there's a lot more students coming up and down the block, you know, you talk about 100 students, additional staff, and whatnot. So it's not just a matter of, you know, obviously, the Paleys are most affected by it, but the reality is, we bought on this block, it's an absolutely gorgeous block, we're talking about approximate, there's about 20 houses on the block. By getting this, this takes away two of the houses, but they're nice-sized properties. What they're actually doing to the block is making it into a commercial block, as opposed to being a residential block, which is what we bought. We have properties that are irregular lots. My lot is approximately 145 deep, at the largest part, it starts 137, goes to 145. The Paleys' lot starts at 145 and goes down to, I think, about 160 and change. So we're talking about very irregular, beautiful lots. The front lots, my lot, is always 43. So we're talking about really a very beautiful residential property, and that's what we bought into on this block. It doesn't really exist in Brooklyn, you know, as far as the property sizes.
But then you are objecting to the school's expansion...
We're not, we're objecting to the fact that they're coming onto the block, they currently have, if they built out to their end of their lot size, as they currently have, which is fenced in, they would have...
But they do own those other two lots.
I understand that.
So if they develop them as of right, if they didn't come to the board, you would object to them developing it as of right?
They wouldn't have been able to, as of right, they would have had to put a parking lot over there. That's what they showed in their, in their, you know, as-of-right scheme.
But what I'm seeing is adjacencies or a library and a funny little triangular portion...
That's correct.
So in terms of what we're talking about, which is a side-yard waiver and a little extra height in the lower-density district, that's it. Neither of those things are impacting someone who lives across the street...
Yeah, absolutely. The neighbor's across the street, and it's a pity he couldn't be here, he's a doctor, he has his work in Montefiore. The big objection, the neighbor's across the street, is right now, you have a house, the actual, the houses typically run about 15, 20 feet maximum at the height in the front of the house, and it extends to larger sizes, but beyond it, to a width of maybe 25 feet. What they're talking about building is a front, a wall, in a sense, of 25 feet high by 64 feet wide. So you're talking about, anyone who lives across the street is going to be looking at a, even though they're talking about putting in eventually some kind of landscaping, I can tell you the landscaping right now is pretty pathetic. So we're not, you know, it's very nice to say we're putting in landscaping, I'd like to know what type of landscaping they're talking about putting in, but if you're looking at a 25 by 64-feet wall, first of all, that's not, we've already discussed this in the last time, 25 feet is almost to the top of the second story of a house. And that's not what any of the houses look like on the block, it's not, it doesn't really fit into the structure of the block.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other speakers? Okay, Ms. Altman?
Daniel Huberger is coming back up to respond to some of the comments by Mr. Klein.
So I've actually brought an image of the project, so that we don't just talk about it in the abstract, we can actually see what it looks like.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we state your name for the record?
My name is Daniel Huberger. I'm with Dattner Architects. We are the architects for the project. So I think the last exchange has pointed out a couple of things, is that the neighbors who are physically impacted by the addition are, of course, the neighbors who are immediately adjacent to the property. That is the library building and the Paleys. And we are sensitive to that fact, and we have made modifications to the plans that address the specific impact on the adjacent property. Not the neighbors further down the block, who have general concerns about the expansion of the school, but who are not physically impacted by it. So let me describe a little bit what those changes are.
Take the mic with you. Take the mic.
Take the mic with you. You can leave the board there, and you can take the mic.
Yeah, I have to flip it around.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Could you push it down a little bit? Move it towards your... Yeah, because...
So?
Thank you.
Okay, good. So, actually, I can leave this here.
Could you hand down my...
All right. So the big change that we had made, the board had suggested that we look at sliding the building a little further to the south, at least, to slide the Bat Midrash, which is over here, a little further to the south. We actually did more than you had required of us, which is to take the entire building and slide the entire thing down towards the south. As a result, we've gone from an eight-foot side yard, which is a typical side yard in this neighborhood, it has now become a 16-foot sidewalk yard. The Paleys have, I would say, an approximately 10-foot driveway on the other side of the property line, so the distance between our buildings and theirs is now about 26 feet. I should also point out that immediately over the property line is the Paleys' driveway, which widens to a wide apron, which leads to a two-car garage, which is situated right here on the western part of the lot. We believe that by sliding the building down, we accomplish two things. First of all, we open up the Paleys' backyard to a much more, it's much more open, more daylight, sunlight, air. As you know, on the third floor, we set back an additional, we have an additional setback, which also lessens the amount of shadow on their yard. And furthermore, because the south part of their yard is all impervious surface, asphalt to driveway or the garage, we don't think that there will be any shadows on the green-planted, occupied part of their garden, and we think that the environment and the atmosphere of that garden will be preserved in the condition that it exists today. So we think this is a significant change, and we think it addresses the immediate concerns of the neighbors, which we take seriously. In terms of the massing on 17th Street, which is the most sensitive one, and where the previous witness lives, you can see that the houses are not 25 feet tall, they're closer to 35 feet tall. Our addition, which is 25 feet to the roof, you can see, comes... Our addition, which is 25 feet to the roof, you can see comes somewhat below the top of the houses, all this to say, not to argue about a few feet here and there, but all this to say that the height of our addition on 17th Street is very much at the scale of the block. And what we're trying to do, by separating it from the mass of the school, which as you can see is considerable, this is the auditorium, is to step down the scale from the existing building and from Avenue J, and with an intermediary step, start to approach the scale of the block further down. I should also point out that on Avenue I, at the end of the block, is a tall apartment building, I forget the number of stories, it's in our elevations, I think it's six stories high, which is considerably higher than any of the yeshiva buildings. So there is a step-down in scale, there is separation from this large mass, and then the detailing of the facade is intended to be very varied, to use a variety of materials, wood, stone, glass, masonry, to be light in color. Not that it resembles exactly the houses on the block, but it has the sort of variety and scale that you would associate with a domestic type of architecture, rather than the more institutional architecture of the existing building. So in short, we think that our addition is not an extension of a commercial-type building into the block, but that in fact mediates a little bit between the existing school building, which admittedly is a very large volume, and the smaller scale of the houses further down the street. Between our building and 17th Street, and between our building and the side yard and the Paley's lot, we now have a setback, a planted setback, which is wide enough that we could have a considerable amount of landscaping in it, including trees and other sorts of tall vegetation, that would do a lot to hide the building, if that is what the neighbors really desire. And I believe that the school is open to working together with the Paleys, with the neighborhood, to achieve some sort of satisfactory planted buffer as well, that in time would tie this building into the rest of the block with mature trees and planting and gates and so forth.
What, could you just say, what's the height of the auditorium building, do you know? Approximately?
The height of the existing auditorium building?
Yeah.
I'll check that for you.
Doesn't have to be exact.
Okay, I would say it is approximately 35 to 40 feet.
Okay, so if you were to add, for example, as was suggested, one of some floor on top of that, I know that you had spoke, we'd asked you about this before, and you talked about the structural capacity when you have column-free space, so, but just theoretically, with sky hooks. If you were to add one floor to this building, then you would have like a 50, five-foot-high or something like that, structure? And that's fine?
If we added to the top of the auditorium?
Yeah.
It's simply impossible. The auditorium is a column-free space, it's a long-span space, it is absolutely not designed to receive another floor on top of it, that would, that would be impossible.
Okay, so it not even, doesn't even matter to talk about it theoretically?
Even theoretically, I mean, no.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the architect?
According to your site plan, you're not going to include any fencing around the bait midrash?
Yes, there will be fencing around the entire school property. Can I bring this closer to you so you can see it?
Okay, but I'm looking at some of your, I'm looking at Z100, and it looked to me like the existing fence line ends right before the bait midrash.
Maybe you want to just, you can bring it closer a few...
Sure. So, no, fencing will be continuous along 17th Street, all the way to the end of the school property. And what we will do is, we will continue the existing fencing, which you see here, which is a wrought iron fence, approximately six feet tall.
That's in front of the auditorium and continues...
In front of the auditorium. We will continue, as you can see in the rendering, all the way to the end of the property. And on the other side of that fence will be a 15-foot setback as required by zoning, which will be planted. There will be a gate there, it is not an entrance gate, it should be clear to everybody at the main entrance of the school, which is on Avenue J, which is where the security desk is, is going to remain the main entrance of the school. The school does not want to operate two different entrances with two different security locks.
Right, okay, great.
And it doesn't look to me like you're adding any street trees. I mean, you may have landscaping, but you're not adding any street trees.
So, right now, vegetation that's shown here is, of course, just conceptual. You can see all of this planting, and this tree is a new tree, it's not there today.
Is that on the street?
But there's street trees required by zoning, right?
Correct. And we would add minimum to that, and we would go beyond that if required by the neighbors. So these are all the mature trees that are planted along the block. This is a new tree, this is an existing tree. And if we had to plant additional trees between the street and the bed midrash, we would do it. Between the bed midrash and the Paley's property, we would do it. There's actually enough room there that we could have a small tree.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Oh, could you show some street trees as required? You know, in the...
On the drawing.
On your plans.
We will do that.
Maybe go back there so the rest of the public can see, sorry.
I've got a question for you about the third floor, I guess it's the second-floor roof that you've set back at the third floor, so that roof is not now going to be utilized by students or it's just...
Correct.
Simply a roof. Question for you, on the terrace at the front on 17th Street, it's sort of serves the same sort of purpose if it's going to be utilized by kids, they can, they're still along that line, you know, adjacent to the property owner.
Oh.
So is it possible, maybe, to create just an area in which they can, they can use on that terrace that is south of...
Yes, we actually, we actually thought that you had been clear that you did not want any of the roofs to be occupied, and the yeshiva...
Because it says terrace, so I'm assuming...
We've changed that.
Okay.
We've changed that.
On the side one and the front one?
Both, yes.
Okay.
So those are both roofs now?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
One other question, how, how do you plan to handle the garbage and where will it be put out on the street?
Now, that is a question I would have to defer to the school to, it's an operational issue. My assumption is, it would function just the way it functions now, and the addition would not influence that in any way.
Just curious, though, what is, are you aware of how it functions now, or that wasn't part of your review?
I am not.
Okay, thanks.
He doesn't follow you well.
Okay.
Before the shower, before the shower early...
I'm sorry, sorry, you need to, you need to state your name. Wait, 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 you need to state your name and take the mic.
Oh, I'm civil Paley. Okay, I'm the other Paley. Okay, the garbage is always put out way ahead of time, which I understand, because the maintenance people have to leave, okay? And there's sometimes so much garbage that is very hard for my husband and I to walk to Avenue J, because you've got the fence on one side and the garbage on the other side. So even if the garbage doesn't get worse, it's bad. And the second thing, you know, talking about the impact on other neighbors, the traffic is very bad. When school lets out, they are double-parked all the way along East 17th Street to pick up children, that's when they're not triple-parked. So, you know, the impact on all the neighbors is very real, and it's something that we'd like addressed.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, no, you've already spoken, so now we're back to Ms. Altman, I think, right? Unless the architect has more to add?
Yes, actually, I do. So in response, we are designing here in real time, in response to the comments about the garbage, I've discussed it with my client, something they are willing to explore as a means of alleviating some of these chronic problems, is to build an indoor refrigerated room in their facility, where the garbage would be stored right up until the time that the pickup is scheduled to happen, so that it wouldn't become a nuisance curbside.
That would be wonderful, thank you. Okay.
That would be somewhere, that would be somewhere in the building, we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, so that will be a condition that, you know, you work that out in terms of your planning, as long as you do that. Okay, that's great. Ms. Altman?
Okay.
I believe we responded to all the concerns at this point, between the letter that was submitted on Monday and Huberger's comments today.
And I appreciate your rapid response to those questions, like...
I appreciate the client's also very graciously agreeing to put in that refrigerated room in about a 10-second question.
Yes, nothing like that, right? Okay. So in terms of submissions, it would be great if there, you could have more information about the landscaping shown on the drawings, even if it's what you're suggesting and it ends up changing.
We'd be glad to.
Yeah, we want it to be lush, so suggest lush, and then the neighbors can always say, oh, I hate lush, or I really like this other kind of deciduous tree, or I don't know what, okay? So, and then in terms of the, if there's time for you to suggest the location of the refrigeration for the trash, fine, otherwise we'll just make that a part of the conditions. I don't think we, are there any other things that we want to...
There were two changes to the roof labels that were already done.
Those were done already, so you'll just submit those.
And the two comments that I already submitted earlier, those are all in my office already. We will not submit the ones that I have, and we will submit the next set that will include this additional information.
Hold on one second. And then if you could, I know a lot of this is already in the record, but the architect made a very good presentation about why additions to the existing building and the auditorium are not feasible. If you could just write that up?
I'm glad to summarize that.
It's already in the testimony, but that would kind of wrap this up. Okay, so, I'm sorry. How much time do you need to do this?
I see no reason why we couldn't submit this within a week. Is that...
A week?
That's good. Okay, so today's the 13th. Could you submit by the 27th? Is that okay?
You can submit sooner, if we can get on the calendar sooner, seeing as this is a school, of course, they are under pressure to try to get this done.
Okay, if you could submit by the 20th?
I can?
Opposition has to respond by the 27th, right? Do we still have to do that? We're going to close the record. Oh, we're going to close.
Hold on, you can just leave it open for submission.
They can submit, we're going to close the hearing, but we'll leave the record open for a submission. And opposition submits on the 27th for a decision on the 3rd of February. Okay?
We have one comment?
Quickly. Say your name.
Stuart Klein, again, we haven't addressed the issue of the scores of toro students who have been using this place in the past, and they're going to be using it at night to the detriment of the residency.
Okay, so as I said, thank you. As I said in the review session, this is our fourth hearing on this item, we've gone in detail through a lot of the different issues, there's been an environmental review, there's lots of issues that have been reviewed already, and we're not going to open up old things. So we're going to move on and we're going to close. So for a motion to close.
Chair Fomato?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have the hearing schedule, everyone understands what's what?
Right, okay.
Thank you.
So, Colonel Kelly, just open your voice.
Thank you.
Item number 196414BZ, 1320 East 23rd Street, Brooklyn.
Lyra J. Altman from the office of Lyra J. Altman.
You wanted to adjourn this as well?
Please.
You have a lot to do, you're sure you can do this all on the same schedule?
They're all a little different schedules.
Oh, okay, so this one is a hearing on the 24th, for a submission on the 10th?
That is correct.
Okay, on February 10th and 24th.
Correct.
Item number 20, 9114BZ, 3420 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, and you wanted to...
Good afternoon again, well, Lyra J. Altman from the office of Lyra J. Altman.
Okay, you want to adjourn this till February 3rd, is that...
Actually, possibly, could we push this off until the 10th? I spoke with the client while I was in hearings this morning, he asked for an additional week.
Okay, that's better. Okay, great. So adjourn till the 10th with a submission on the 20th, sorry, on the 24th of January, right? I'm sorry, I've got this back.
27.
Oh, sorry. You want to submit on, sorry, say again?
I'd like a hearing on February 10th, submit whenever leaves your board.
Ah, okay, so that, I think, is a little bit of a problem for us, because our hearing schedule is really packed on the 10th.
Okay.
So can we have you up here, the next hearing is the 24th?
I think the client would prefer to do the, move it a week earlier than to go later.
The 3rd is late.
So that's the February 3rd, and I think that's where we're back to. So February 3rd with a submission on the 27th. Will that work? It'll have to work.
I will have, I will have to make it work.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, am I calling all the HPD together?
Yeah, I don't know if I know. Hold on a second, hold on. Just one second.
Just adjourn. Yes. I think that's right.
Okay. Sorry for the delay of the way he's ever here to watch. Okay. Yeah.
Call all of them?
Yes, please.
Items number 21, 22, 23, and 24, calendar numbers 285, 286, 14BZ, 288, 14BZ, McLaughlin Street, Orlando Street, Cedar Grove Avenue, 297, 14BZ, 298, 14A, 299, 14BZ, and 314A, Sixth Topping Street, 28 Topping Street, Staten Island, 307, 14BZ, which is 540 Hunter Avenue, Hunter Avenue, Staten Island, 308, 308, 14, 310, 14, and 312, 14, is 178 Kizwick, 55 Hunsider Avenue, 297, Colony Avenue, Staten Island. Requesting adjournment, so...
Yes, so they're requesting adjournment for a rehearing on February 3rd, or hearing on February 3rd, where the submission really should be January 20th. So, not sure if they're going to make that, but there's a lot of modifications to the drawings that are needed. Okay.
New cases, we're going to switch out. Item number 2 will come first, 203, 14BZ, 18 West 8th Street, Manhattan.
Sorry about that, you never know how long these hearings are going to go on.
I'm used to being last, so it's not an issue.
Even we don't know.
Good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant. So, review session, I understand there were certain questions raised by the board. First, in no particular order, regarding the zoning district boundary, it does appear that there's a discrepancy between the ZOLA map and actually looking at the zoning resolution, but...
Never depend on ZOLA.
Well, as far as the... There is a split district that runs through the rear of the building, it looks like it's approximately six to eight feet, that would affect the proposed PCE on the first floor. We reached out to the project architect, we're going to obtain an updated denial and seek a special permit pursuant to 7352.
Are you sure you need a special permit, as opposed to it's a pre-existing zoning lot that qualifies for that 25-foot, more than 50% is in the, in the desired district?
We can review.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if there's an issue with the change in use, we'll review if it's necessary to obtain a special permit, we'll do that, if we just need to change the papers, we'll do that, but we'll address the issue regarding the split district. There was also a question, I believe, raised, may have been raised about the floor area noted on the plan. We weren't sure about the discrepancy, but it does appear that it is consistent, 1,236 square feet proposed on the ground floor, and that's what shows...
1,000, what'd you say?
1,236 square feet.
Look at your drawings, they say 1,326. There's a, somebody with, you know, dyslexia or...
Floor table says 1236, where does the drawing, the drawing says 13?
1326, somewhere on the drawing. And 3058 in the cellar. Sorry, I...
No, no, that's fine, 3058. We'll review, we'll double-check and make sure there's no discrepancy, but the... square feet proposed on the ground floor, and that's what shows...
What'd you say?
1,236 square feet.
Look at your drawings, they say 1,326. There's a, somebody with, you know, dyslexia.
Floor table says 1236. Where does the drawing, the drawing says 13?
1326, somewhere on the drawing. And 3058 in the cellar. Sorry, I...
No, no, that's fine, 3058. We'll review.
Just check it, okay.
We'll double-check and make sure there's no discrepancy, but the one, per conversation with the architect, that on the most recent set of plans, what's shown, the 1236 should be accurate for the ground floor, square footer. So we'll see if there's any transposition of numbers in there, make sure that it's consistent. There was a, I believe, a question regarding the signage. There is no proposed signage at the site on the exterior, and there's no stickers proposed on the windows. If you reference the photos of this particular building, they have large glass windows. There is branding within the site that is more than eight feet back from those windows. This is a PCE, this is a single-operator PCE that's done on a class basis. It's not a situation like a larger facility like a Crunch or Equinox that might want to attract walk-in traffic. There is no walk-in traffic here. Everyone registers for classes online, so that's the intent behind it. And we did submit the, I believe, the landmarks, CNE. So that is the proposal, no signage proposed on the exterior.
So, and it's legalization, you need to make that clearer in your...
Yes, regarding legalization, we will go ahead and change the papers. You know, just to clarify, this application was filed in August, and it took significantly longer to receive the notice of comments than expected. We received that in November, and we responded within two days, and you know, this is the first hearing date. So unfortunately, due to significant financial burdens, you know, we let the operator know that they opened, but we will change the papers to reflect the legalization. And then, I think there was a question regarding the sound. We are very willing to put a note on the plan regarding the 45 decibel limit as far as the sound note, but just to note, this is a building that's not adjacent to any residential uses. This is a purely commercial building. The residential buildings that are to the rear of the building, there is actually a separation between those buildings, they're not immediately adjacent, there is a yard. So there is no residential space immediately adjacent to this building. We did meet with the community board, discussed the sound concerns that they raised. This particular community board is very focused on sound, and they were very satisfied with the presentation. We received no complaints and don't expect any complaints, but we're very willing to revise the current set of plans and add that sound note to say that we'll, you know, agree to the sound limitation.
Okay, but also, could you have somewhat explained what a box within a box is?
Sure, I'll get more detail, get more detail, but my understanding is that it's the box in the box is that, I guess, that there's just like double-spaced ceilings and walls, I think, is what the idea is, and the architect describes it as a box in a box, so there's a separation between...
So the box floats within?
Floats within the basement and...
Could you just...
Sure, sure, we'll get some notification, or some clarification as far as that, in addition to putting the sound note. I don't know if there were any other questions, those are the ones that I picked up from...
There was a, there's a note on the CO concerning an easement at the rear. That the sitting occurs through, I guess, the adjacent building, is that?
We'll clarify. My understanding is I believe that that easement is that an easement goes to the rear of the building into that alley space that is in the back, and that there was an agreement between this particular space and the lots to the rear to allow their easement to exit through an alley adjacent to those residential. So it's an easement.
Who exits? The occupants of the building?
Commercial building would exit through the residential lots to the rear, but we'll get clarification on the easement that's referenced, but that's my understanding, we just looked at it.
And I assume your client is using that as egress?
I believe so, yeah.
On their space, so can you?
Sure, we'll double-check.
Make sure that that's sort of noted on the plan as well.
Also clarify, I don't know if it's for the entire building or if it's for like one particular retail space, but we'll get clarification on it.
So I suppose that should also be noted, and that that root of egress will be kept, maintained, free and clear.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Sorry?
I have a note about the neighbors.
Well, my question really was about asking the neighbors, but you said you had a community board meeting and they were...
We did have a community board meeting, we have a notification. I also believe this community board is one of the community boards that asks us to post or notify. I don't know for sure, but we definitely did the board-required notification as far as the notification of hearing, and we did meet with the community board.
And you notified immediate neighbors who would be affected by this as part of this hearing?
Correct.
Right?
Definitely.
If you could just verify that those immediate neighbors, the ones behind you who might be affected by...
Sure, we can take a look at the proof of notification and just make sure that they're on there.
Make sure that those people were covered. The issue is about PJs and cardio dance activity.
No, understood.
Okay. No other questions, comments? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so if you could make those submissions in response to those comments, just get the information from the architect about the box within the box and review the split lot zoning issue. I guess we can't close this because if it's a split lot problem, then we have to add another special permit to this.
That's the only thing, the others would be easy to respond to. That's the only issue that potentially could take a bit more time, and if we need to amend the denial.
Right, exactly. So, but do check because it might be something that's just as of right. What?
7711.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think it's very likely because it's probably a pre-61 lot, and you probably fall within that more than 50% and not more than 25-feet rule, so you might just have a split lot question, and you just need to add that to your statement of facts, and then you're done.
We will amend accordingly, whether it's 7711 or 7352.
So you'll just respond specifically to the issues that you've already, I mean, in writing, to the issues you've already raised?
Definitely.
Okay, great. So, can you submit?
The only concern that I would have is that if it were necessary to go to DOB, we might, if we could submit, I think, just to be safe, if we submitted the 3rd?
Yeah.
I think that's three weeks, I think that gives us an extra time, and we may be ready ahead of that, but I'd rather...
Well, so if you submit the 3rd, we don't, usually it's a two-week interval. We don't have a hearing on the 17th, so the hearing would be on the 24th of February, if that works.
So there's no hearing the 17th, but there's a hearing the 10th?
Yes. And the 10th is, well, I think we could handle this one.
If you could handle this one on the 10th? Maybe let's do that, have the hearing the 10th and submit then the 27th?
On the 27th.
And we'll just, okay.
You know what you can do is quickly check the zoning, because if you have a problem with the zoning, then it sort of changes everything, right? You're going to have to resubmit a special permit application, but you should know in a few days whether you have a zoning problem.
Definitely, yes. We'll be able to, we'd still be able to amend our papers. The only delay potentially would be with the Department of Buildings. As far as our purposes, we'll definitely be able to submit by the 27th. So, yeah, submit by the 27th, hearing the 10th works.
Hearing the 10th.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Item number 1, 16914BZ, 325 Avenue Y, Brooklyn.
You want them to set up? You want to set up PowerPoint, is that?
You want to start it or wait for presentation?
Did you, did you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so who's ever setting it up can work on setting that up while we hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon, Chair, Phil Mutter and Commissioners. My name is Emily Simons, and I'm with Simons &amp; Wright. I was at the review session yesterday, and I heard all the comments and questions. At this time, I would like to say that both my partner and I were city employees and have utmost respect for city agencies. If there has been a misunderstanding, I apologize. We wish to respond fully to all of your questions and comments and queries, and we want to work together to bring this incredibly important PK program to a neighborhood that is greatly underserved and in great need of these kinds of services. The application is filed pursuant to Section 7319 of the New York City Zoning Resolution of 1961 for a special permit to allow a community facility, Use Group 3 school, to occupy a portion of the cellar and the first, second, and entire, a portion of the cellar and first floor, and the entire second, third, and fourth floor of a building located at 325 Avenue Y in an M11 zoning district in the Gravesend, Coney Island neighborhood of Brooklyn. Upon approval of this application, the applicant will obtain a permit for childcare service issued pursuant to Section 47.03 of the New York City Code from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene at the City of New York, thus meeting subsection C of the definition of a school found in Section 1210 of the zoning resolution. The premises are located on Block 7192, Lot 45, and are bounded by Shell Road to the west, I'm sorry, Shell Avenue to the west, Avenue Y to the south, West 3rd Street to the east, and Bork Court to the north, again, in an M1 zoning district that is surrounded to the north and east by an R4 zoning district, and to the south by an R5 zoning district. The premises are also located within the Special Ocean Parkway District outside of the Ocean Parkway Subdistrict and meet all the regulations of such special districts. The area is characterized primarily by one and two-family houses, townhouses, I'm sorry, townhouses, and small multiple dwellings, and the beach haven affordable housing is to the south. There's a large New York City housing project, such as the 28-building Marlboro Housing Project, and the Coney Island House is located further to the south of the premises. An MTA transit storage and overhaul facility is located to the west of the premises across Shell Road. The neighborhood is also characterized by numerous community facilities, such as churches, synagogues, and public schools. McDonald's Avenue to the north is a major shopping thoroughfare. A recent application, 3111, I'm sorry, 311-13BZ, was filed to locate a physical culture establishment, PCE, on a portion of the first floor of the premises. The Board of Appeals decide this case in favor of the PCE application on July 29, 2014. As required pursuant to 7319, the subject site is located within 400 feet of a residential neighborhood. Comprehensive search of the alternative sites in the surrounding neighborhood revealed that there were no sites of adequate size to accommodate the pro-womenage needs of Inner Force Y. I'm now going to turn the program over to the program administrator, Dr. Gary Ellis.
Thank you so much for that warm introduction and bringing up some of the facts regarding the program. Now...
Could you, I'm sorry, hit your speaker.
Dr. Gary Ellis. Now, I know how difficult it is to sit down and hear. I think you ladies and gentlemen have been at this from the morning, but I'm going to tell you right now, I am not going to be denied my time, and I want every minute. So if you need to stand up and stretch and just, you know, shake the knots off, please do so, okay? Because I want you to be relaxed, and I want you to be receptive to what it is that we're saying, because I know that you have had a long day. But since I don't know what it is that you're looking for, and the fact that you have asked so many questions, it is my duty and responsibility to make sure that you're brought up to speed, and that is the reason why I'm here today, to help add clarity to the things that were being, that were being said, and some of the questions that were raised. You know, incidentally, you know, as I walked around the building, and because of my nature, I will say this, as a primary care physician, I must at least share this with you. If DOH, who regulates our building, if they walked into our facility and saw what this building is like with all the mold that's on the wall and on the ceiling, we would fail. I'm telling you right now that we would not pass that examination. That's the reality of the world that I live in, in terms of childcare. So as a physician, I have done what I'm supposed to do. Above all, do no harm and make sure that you help those you can. So I've actually helped everybody in this building by saying that to you, ladies and gentlemen. You know what? I really appreciated the visit that I had on Friday by the Commissioners and Inspector because it really helped shed some clarity for me. And you know, as I sat there and I was fielding the questions and how they were coming at it, and I says, "Wow, wait a minute, this feeling is so familiar." And then it dawned on me, ah, this reminded me of when I was in undergrad and when I was in medical school. My friends were actually, they were attorneys and engineers, and the arguments that we used to have all the time when we got together, you know, I would say things such as, "Oh, well, you know, this was, this is how this happened," and my friend who were attorneys, they were like, "Listen, you wimp, you're too soft. Just give me the facts, I don't want to hear anything else. Just tell me what the facts are, and that's all. Everything else is, you know, by the wayside." But the engineer that was in the group, he would say to us, "Why are we fighting? Can I build something for you? Let us help." And that was the relationship that was within that room. The attorneys, the engineers, they wanted the facts, and I realized that there were a lot of facts that was missing, and there were some of the things that I had a responsibility to help shed some light on. Now, the reality is, most of the things that had to be addressed and that was asked, they were really programmatic questions, and because they were programmatic questions, I know the fact is, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, that is their job. They are the ones that actually regulate us as an entity. They are the ones that we actually seek a license from, and because of that, we know that that's another hurdle that we have to pass. So many of the things that, questions that were raised, I will share with you that I understand that some of you may not understand and know what the answers are, but I assure you, there is an entity that the city has in place that actually is responsible for those things, and that's one of the things that we as an agency have to actually address. So I know that the work that we're doing is to really establish ourselves as an agency, and there are several questions that actually have been raised. I think that it's also important that I share a little bit about who I am and where I, why I got to be where I am right now. I served as medical advisor to the Commissioner of the Department of Health and Human Services. I also worked as a special assistant to the Department of, the Secretary of the Department of Health and Human Services, and I have also worked for years with the city and all the political leaders. The program Inner Force, it is the way my wife and I have chosen to give back to the city and the community. This is something that we believe strongly in, and what separates our program from all programs in the city, we don't know of one, and this is what I shared with the mayor and the elected officials. With every child that attends our program, because of the endowment that we have at the university, every child gets, have access to the endowment at the university for them to go to college. There's no other childcare program like that in the city. We don't know of any in the country. In fact, this is something that I presented to the mayor, and this is something that they embrace, and this is something that they said, this is something that we would want to explore a little bit further. The data is very clear in what it is that we do and what we have done. Now, there are some questions that were raised regarding our meeting on Friday, and again, what I would like to do is extend an open invitation to each and every one of you for you to come and see our program, because I think it really lends itself to getting a clear and better understanding, and I think that if you saw it, it would be, have a little bit clarity. And I'm going to attempt to try to make that happen for you a little bit here today. So, you know, one of the things that was, what's on? One of the things that we talked about, we're assessing the need. We know that the area in which is in question, Hurricane Sandy actually had created a huge need for the families. What happened when Hurricane Sandy came through in the South Brooklyn area in which we are proposing to help and work with? All of the centers pretty much were affected by it, and the city, the city centers that were closed because of Hurricane Sandy, they were never replaced. So now you have thousands of children literally within that community that is not receiving services. The ones that were privately owned, most of them could not recover from Hurricane Sandy. That's just a matter of fact. Last year, when the mayor rolled this program out, the number one area that did not receive the full service was South Brooklyn, within the geographic area that we're proposing to help. In fact, that was one of the things that we talked about yesterday when I met with the deputy mayor, because we have actually set up a plan. When I met with the deputy mayor yesterday, we discussed where we were regarding the project, because I shared with them, there's no other place that exists in the city. The city, the mayor wants to move forward with the UPK program. I think everyone in this room actually knows that. The city wants to move, the mayor wants to move forward with a strong UPK program. What we proposed to the mayor was that, well, let's have UPK schools, let's have, so that when the educator, education consultant goes around, they're not traveling to several CBOs, and I think everyone in this room probably are aware that the city has partnered with community-based organizations, and within those community-based organizations, the children that are part of that, of the program, are also a part of the Department of Education for the UPK programs. That's what the mayor have actually brought online, where he's providing services for all four-year-olds. for all four-year-olds within the city. The reality is, all four-year-olds are not receiving services, and a huge portion of them are coming from the community in which we are addressing where Avenue Y is located. And we have proposed that we will build a school, because the city is not in position to build schools. And because of the fact that we have access to over a million square footage of real estate within Brooklyn, we have said that we will set up and start putting up these schools so that the city can actually have one stop when it comes to the UPK program. This is something that we have, we spoke about. This is something that when the mayor came into our community and spoke to the, not only the fundraisers, but also the people within that community, he said that he had a commitment to helping the children, all children, and that he would help especially the kids in the areas that we know that there was a great need. And that actually helped us to move forward with some of the things that we're doing. Now, I do know that there were some questions that were raised regarding the, share a little bit about you, about the history of Inner Force right now. We currently run a program. We have approximately over five hundred families that are being served, a hundred and forty-eight students currently receive UPK through UPK funding. Three hundred and thirty-nine are part of the Early Learn Initiative, which is run by ACS program. And there's, you know, we provide continuity of care model, and that's the one that we're looking to push, where we could have a one-stop shop. We have an endowment for the local universities, which is what I mentioned to you, and the state grantees for UPK Head Start. We have received a grant for, one of the questions that was asked, do we have any commitment or funding for the programs that we're seeking to run? And the answer is yes. We had applied for UPK from the state. What happened? Just to share with you how it works. The city releases an RFP, Request for Proposal. Then, once you apply to the city and they allocate the awardees for the RFP, you are then allowed to apply directly to the state, just as the city as a whole applied to the state. We did exactly that. Under the Administration for Children's Services ACS program, we were awarded the Early Learn Program Award, and we acquired a hundred and forty-five UPK students through their program, which is through the city. The state, we applied to them independently for a hundred and twelve slots for UPK, and those slots were intended to use over at Avenue Y. We have, we received the award from the state for the UPK program.
Sorry, so you have an early learning grant for Avenue Y for a hundred, how many?
No. The early learn, no, the early learn grant that we have right now, it is for our East New York Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Now, the way it works, once you have a program and you have a relationship, an ongoing relationship with the city as well, as other sites come onboard, you then would apply for an extension of your program to the existing community, which is exactly what our intentions are regarding the program at Avenue Y. And this is all shared with the administrators at ACD, Department of Health and, Department of Health. So those are some of the things that we have in place.
Sorry, because this is complicated. And the state UPK slot, you said that part was allocated for Avenue Y, right?
Yes, for the state.
For the state. How many slots is that?
We have the, a hundred.
A hundred.
Now, just for clarity, we as a program applied for the hundred slots. It is our intention, was our intention to use some of those slots over at Avenue Y, because we do have additional sites that we also provide, we'll be applying the UPK program to as well. We have another location on Church Avenue, and we have Avenue Y.
That's in addition to your, Church Avenue is in addition to the East New York?
That's correct. Yes. Our goal is very simple. The facts are, they build McDonald's, Burger Kings, and liquor stores in the community that I was raised in. Our goal is to create learning centers so that we can have a safe learning environment for all the children of our community.
So the, the subject, the reason that we're asking for this kind of information is simply this, because you're talking about seven hundred kids in this new program with ninety staff members, expensive, expensive. And we just need something to indicate that, you know, you move into this place, and then all of a sudden you're on your own, you know, standing on a corner with a cup.
Right, that's right.
So some kind of, some kind of written something from somebody to indicate that we love Inner Force, we're really happy they're expanding their program, we would be in support of their program if it came from, I don't know, any of these different kinds of agencies. Sometimes you can get these kinds of commitment letters.
Well, you know, I'm glad you said that. Well, our mayor himself was at our facility, and he said it. So, you know, and they know that they're doing, and we have, that's part of the overall proposed presentation that I have here for you today. And I think that speaks volume, because this is something that he ran on. This is something that he came into our community and said that he would do. And listen, I speak freely here. The community that I was raised in, they don't always get first preference in anything. I stand before you today, not to represent my own biological children. God has blessed me personally enough with a beautiful family and a very strong, helpful wife. And she would not anything that happened to them. I'm here speaking to you on the behalf of the thousands of children in East New, over in South Brooklyn, that does not have a voice, that does not have someone like me fighting on their behalf. This is what I am committed to. This is what I am here to, who I'm here to represent, because there's a huge need there. So when we talk about the things that our children, your children, my children, that may receive, those children in East New York, in East New York as well as South Brooklyn, they deserve the very same things that we provide. And the data is very clear. They're not getting it. They're sitting at home right now. They're being raised by TV and older siblings. They're not getting what your child or my children are receiving on a day-to-day basis. And the reality is, if they don't have a place to go, it won't happen for them, and they'll just get older.
That part is understood. It's just trying to make sure that there's, there's money behind this application. But the, but the UPK slots, how many of the students in the proposed project in Avenue Y are going to be under the UPK program?
Well...
I thought there's, you sort of have daycare, then you have pre-K, and then you have sort of kindergarten, right? So there's a chunk of kids who would be funded under the slots that you receive from UPK?
Yes.
How many are there?
Yes. Now, let me offer a little clarity to you that regarding how it works. The UPK program, that comes from the Department of Education. They are the main distributor of the UPK program. ACS is also in partnership with the Department of Education through the Early Learn Program. ACS releases contract, RFPs, that ultimately you can apply for, and once in receipt, you are able to provide services for children for childcare as well as UPK program. However, the overall program itself is under the, is all under childcare. So childcare, even though it's a childcare program, within childcare, you have different components. So, and it all leads right back to the different funding stream, whether it is Head Start, early Head Start, or UPK program.
The questions will continue, but continue with your presentation.
Yeah, okay.
There'll be a little problem, I think. Yeah.
Well, you know, I have it here. You talk about occupancy within, questions were, some questions were given to me, and I'll just actually go through some of them, you know, during occupancy, you know. And the question was raised that, will seven hundred children and ninety adults be occupying the building at the same time from open to close, which is what you were alluding to? And yes, all children and adults will be occupying the facility from opening to close. And that moved on, and the question was asked, will every room be occupied simultaneously? And the answer is, all room will be occupied simultaneously. Each room is actually self-contained. The way it works in childcare, just as, and actually even in the public school system, it actually is the same format. When the children are younger, once they enter into the facility, they usually go directly to the bill, to the classroom that they are actually assigned to. Within the classrooms, the way it's set up, they have what's known as different stations. So within, in different areas, such as whether the wet area, the library, the house and play, there's seven main domains that they usually have set up within the room. When a child comes in, they have various activities that they actually would partake in. So the question, the answer to the question is that, will they occupy simultaneously? Will they be in the room? Yes. And will they, and they will all be in a self-contained room. That's how childcare operates, and that's how the public school. It's only when a child really reaches, I think maybe second grade, they actually start moving from their classroom, from one classroom, other than gym, other than gym, when they go to gym. But all children, when they're in the younger grade state within that same classroom. And it is the same format that actually exists. Now...
How about lunch? Lunch gets brought to them into the classroom?
Yes. With it, they follow in a, by, by the UPK, I'm sorry, the Head Start standards, which is the gold standard across the country. And one of the things that they promote is that you have family-style meals. So the meals are actually brought into the classroom, and then they sit around just as how the families, when you look at, and the reasoning behind that is that Head Start was geared towards giving children the experience of eating as a family and sitting down where you can actually have a discussion. Most of the children and families that we service right now, they're not coming from homes that actually will sit down and have meals together. They're not coming home, coming from homes. They're actually being, you know, eating on the fly, basically. But the concept of sitting together as a family, sharing the food out, learning the measurements as they're doing it, having conversations, I mean, these are some of the things that we do with our children, but it is not the norm for most families. And that's one of the things that we do within our program, and that is the gold standard that ACS suggests, and it is the standard that the Head Start program from the feds actually encourage. Now, since I'm talking about food, there was another question. I'll just address that at the same time. Food is not prepared. The model that we have right now, and what we will continue to employ, is that our food will be catered, just as they are right now. So they're catered to us, and when they're brought in, brought to us, we actually then redistribute it to the children. So we're not cooking on the facility. We're having the food catered. And the time, we basically will have catering being done, as it is being done now, once a day, and that usually around eleven o'clock. What happens, they will bring, the way it works, they bring the snack for the, I'm sorry, the breakfast for the previous day, the day before. So you start off, and you're always replenishing what you get. And then the lunches, the lunch is brought to the agency at the time, around the time for them actually to be served out. And that's pretty much the format that we follow regarding food and the catering.
So is the, is the food brought into a pantry and then distributed from there?
Yes, yes, yes. We have a receiving room that we receive it. It's like, it's not a full kitchen. It's a kitchen, not a full kitchen.
So you can heat things up in a, like a microwave?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes, yes, yes. Microwave, refrigerator, and freezers, basically. But we're just not cooking the food at the facility. Now, any other questions regarding that? We have...
I do have a question about the prior thing. If you could, just to make a note, maybe one of the people there can make a note. You described the classroom layout, which was very helpful, because I haven't been in a classroom like this, that it's divided into stations.
Yes.
If you could just provide us a plan showing, or even a photograph, because you have it at your other location, showing how the classrooms are subdivided into those stations.
Yes, yes. Fantastic. We'll definitely make that happen. And one of the curriculums that we use is creative curriculum, and when you look at the standards, it's all by design, because they know that children have, you know, short attention span. And the way the stations are set up, it's actually designed to help them move through that, and at the same time, working through themes that are developed for the school, and at the same time, particularly being drilled down into the classrooms. Now, regarding the age range of kids, and I think we sort of kind of touched upon that a little bit, we receive our licensing from the governing body, which is the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. They are responsible for licensing the program. Depend on the age group that you have an interest in, they will then, let's say for infants and toddlers, that's one specific licensing that they, that they offer. Infants and toddlers, age range runs from birth to two years of age. Toddlers are from two, I'm just giving roughly, from two to, let's say, three years of age, those are toddlers. And then you have the preschool groups, which are basically four to five years old. And then you have school age, which is a little bit older. Even though that there is some overlap, obviously because things are now being changed, the mayor, the mayor's initiative have now really moved, four-year-olds technically are now school age, right? And that's one of the challenges that the city is actually dealing with, because four-year-olds in school under the UPK program, their day ending a lot earlier than the regular school day has created a huge issue for the city. And one of the issues that, and that's something that we were able to, and we are, we're able to address, and we are addressing within the program itself, because we do provide an extended day for the children, because most families that we work with do not, cannot get off work at three, three-thirty. And the reality is, we have to provide services for them. And all of our licensing basically comes directly from the licensing agency, which is the Department of Health. Now...
Just a question about that also. So for the ones who are considered school age, whatever that is technically, does that mean you're being, so that's kindergarteners, right?
That's right.
Normally you would find in, say, a public school or a private school, that, so does that mean you're getting licensed by the Department of Ed as well under that program for, for those kindergarteners?
Right. Department of Ed does not do any licensing for the program. All licensing that is done, is done through the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Even though, yes, even though that they are four years, and let's say, for argument's sakes, actually, in all practicality, four-year-olds are school-age children. That's, that's a fact. The Department of Health gives you the license for all age groups, even school age. So the license that you receive, and I shared, I showed it with your colleagues, with other chairman, committee members that were there, what it looks like. They, they issue a license of the various age category, and you are covered. And the reason being, there's certain criteria that each age group is required, and you have to meet. And once you meet those categories, what they do is they look at it, and they give you the license, they issue the license so that you may be able to provide services for those children. Like, for example, infants and toddlers, it comes on the same licensing, because their needs are a little bit different. The rooms are set up a little bit different. The number of children that you can have in the room are, that's different. And all of those factors are the ones that are being regulated by the Department of Health. When they come in, they will tell you, you know, you have the license. Once you have the total number of children, you are then able to make the adjustments, because as you know, as a child aged from infants, they grow into a toddler, and they keep them under the same licensing capacity, which is Department of Health. That is their responsibility.
Okay. So like if it was a private school that had kindergarten up and up to, say, fourth grade, wouldn't they also, they would only have a Department of Health license? They wouldn't have something from the Department of Education indicating that they're giving them the proper education to meet state guidelines?
That's correct. If you were, if you were a private entity that was applying for a private school, like, I'll give you an example. And not necessarily would be bound by any of the Department of Ed rules, but would actually acquire licensing. We're not. Well, I wouldn't even think about going down that road. We're not, well, I wouldn't even think about going down that road. But within most, um, Jewish communities, a lot of the programs, they're under a different type of licensing, where, in fact, they're not even regulated to the same extent as we are, even though they are still dealing with the same age group, because it's a religious exempt. So the, the answer to your question is that, do you need a license? Yes, you know, for some people, like, the way we run our program, we make sure we obtain the appropriate licensing, but there are other programs there, and there are other venues, vehicles that one can use to obtain permission to run a school without any oversight from the city. I'd like to figure out how they did that, too. But it exists.
Let, let me just put it this way, if I have a child who's in your kindergarten program, does that child, when he or she enters first grade in the local public school, get credit for having been in your kindergarten?
Yes.
That's what I want to know.
Yes.
And I kind of want to know how that child got credit. So maybe, you know, you don't have to answer this right here, but maybe you could just look at, how, how is your, your pre-K program? I mean, I don't know if this happens anymore, but it's sort of in the old days, if you went to nursery school, you would get a bump up in kindergarten if it was a good nursery school. So for example, yours is a great UPK program, so might you get to sort of skip kindergarten in the public school? Why would you be able to do that? Because you could demonstrate somehow or other to the local public school, or the Department of Ed, or whoever it is who you demonstrate, that you've already given them that level of education. That's kind of what I'm getting at, like, where, how do you prove to an outside agency that you've given them, the kids, what they need to have at those age groups?
Right.
Right?
You know, it, it, that's an excellent question. And in fact, that is one of the things that separate our program from most programs. As a scientist, and as an educator, education is at the top of the list for us. Every year, each child, one of the things that we do, we have their gifted and talented elementary and middle schools. And there are some schools that you actually have to test to get into. We pride ourselves in actually doing exactly what you just described, that our students are actually going to the, um, the public schools, and in some cases, private schools. And because they are so advanced, then, in some cases, they're actually being challenged at the level that they should be. And in others, sad to say, when they come back to us in the afternoon, we're seeing the progress that they were making, is not necessarily being kept up within the public schools that they are, you know, so, which has actually raised several questions for us. We're not protecting our interests in terms of higher education, and in terms of the, what we have, um, it's, it's, it's something that's similar to what's going on within the Head Start program. The Head Start program, the data is very clear. Children succeed, and they, they, you know, they accomplish a lot at a young age, but as they go in, go off to other schools, they end up not, um, performing as well. And it's the same thing. Um, so now, this is one of the things that we are doing, is, um, monitoring what it is at our children, um, their accomplishments, where they're going, reaching out to, um, the families and collecting that information.
Okay, but what I'm trying to get at, let's, let's see if we can stay focused on what we have to do here. We have to dis-, dis-, determine that your 700 kids, that there's a need established by the funding agencies for your 700 kids to appear at this place. So, that's what I keep asking. Do you have something that you can show us that you, for instance, got for Interforce Tots, that funds Interforce Tots and certifies that it's a needed facility in the district, and that you will get the same thing for Interforce Y? Okay? And, and, and some kind of commitment letter, something, something from some agency indicating that the 700 kid need is the need? That, that's the question. The reason it matters is because you need a special permit to locate in this place, and you say you need a certain amount of square feet, which is quite a lot, and that 20,000 square feet someplace else wouldn't work. But if you only needed, you only had a certificate of need, essentially, certification from someplace else for 400 students, maybe you could be in another location. That's all we're trying to get at, right?
Right.
You understand?
Um, I think I do. And, um, I would, and I understand where the, um, the question may arise from. The reality is, we do have a need, and that, the, the, the data is clear. When you talk about South Brooklyn, there's no question about that. That data is clear, and, um...
But I'm not talking about data, I'm talking about eight, for instance, you said the, you met with the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you have something from the mayor's office? Do you have something from a city council member? Do you have something from something? That could help us establish that there's actually the need for, I, I mean, I don't theoretically, conceptually question this, but that's not the test. The test is that there really is a need that will be supported at this location.
Wait on the laptop? Okay. We have the seven, the room itself, in terms of, first of all, there are thousands of children within that community that's not receiving services.
Again, but that, I understand that, because that information you provided, it's just a, it's just...
Here's how it works regarding funding. When you ask for funding, then no one gives you fund to help build something first. The first thing that you have to do, even though we did apply to the state, and we have received that, and, um, we're going to pull that down and, and provide you with that, so that you can actually see it. And if you go to our, um, website, I'm sorry.
Actually, just, just if I may, because I, I, I'm the executive director. I, I know, I spoke to someone at the Department of Ed, said that there was an RFP due, uh, in December, and you, you applied for that, I, I...
Yes.
Yeah. I'm wondering if, if, um, you couldn't provide us just even stating how, like, what, what did you apply for there? Was it, was it a, you know, uh, did you ask for 500 seats, and then you have sort of the state that's, you know, filling out the, the remainder? So I think looking, like, looking even broadly about what you've asked for in terms of funding, and where, and then suggesting where, if there's gaps, where you, you expect to go find that. Maybe there's, you know, ACS funding that's, you know, the RFP is due next month, or something like that. So just looking, just giving us a sense of where you intend to, to fund all these, these for, I think would be very helpful, and, um, you know, we can...
Right.
Okay. So, and you know what I'll do? I'll provide that to you in writing, so that we, and I'll just share with you, based on what, um, the executive director just suggested, and us providing that information to you. And I'll, I'll do exactly that. It will be the same funding source that we apply for and we use now. Uh, we have vouchers, um, that we get through Administrative for Children Services, we have the, um, the Early Learn Program, we intend. Now, the, when you talk about the city programs, when RFPs are out, even though I wish I was a part of that group that can actually say, I'm going to definitely get the RFP by responding to it, but I am not. It's like everyone else, you, you have to apply for it, and then they will then distribute the awards as they see fit. But those are the same type of funding that we have, that we currently hold, is what we will do, and I'll provide that for you.
That's what you want to understand.
And we do that.
How do you support your Interforce Tots?
Fantastic. We do that.
If, if we might, um, and thank you for your explanation and supportive application, um, and maybe this is better directed to council. Could you please address the A finding of ZR 7319, and establish for this board that this many students are, are, you know, required, that you are required to serve this many students, and that you can only do so on the site that is the subject of this application?
Required, that's a...
Oh, can you... Sorry, required is a tricky, a tricky word, but, I mean, sort of establish...
There are thousands of children within that community that need services. You're asking for seven, you're saying, are we required to do that?
I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, required was the wrong word. But we need to establish, and council, I'm sure you're familiar with this, the A finding of 7319 is what's sort of the threshold for this application. No one's questioning the very legitimate need, uh, and the, you know, the requirement was, was misspoke, I apologize. Clearly, there's a need to be served here. Uh, but council, please try and reduce to writing the A finding of 7319 with the board.
Definitely, okay. I'm sorry, you know, I apologize, but when you talk about something that's dear to my heart, I, um, you know, because I could have been that child that was lost, and services were provided.
So here's, here's the, here's the real issue, because, you should understand, because this is very arcane zoning stuff that you're involved in, which really has nothing to do with operating a school, but here you are, trying to move your school into a manufacturing district, and that's why we're here, right? But for example, um, there were, I think it was like 28 sites that were shown, that you looked at, where there were only 20,000 square feet here, and 15,000 square feet there. And, for example, this would, maybe this is a way of doing it, to say, um, yes, we could locate one facility over there, and one over there, and one over there, and in the total, we'd get 700 kids, but that would be terrible, because we need economy of scale. We only have 90 staff members. If that, if we located in three different places, we'd end up with 200 staff members, because there's overlap, it would make busing, or however the kids get there, impossible. It would do all those things. Maybe that's another way of addressing it. We need to service the 700 kids that we've identified. In fact, there are way more kids than 700, and that's another thing that should be said in the statement. Way more kids than 700 in this district that need these services, but we, as an, as an institution, can only handle 700, because that's already enormous amount, and we won't be able to do it if we're scattered at these allowable locations. Maybe that's how we approach it, okay? And if you can say, then talk about Interforce Tots, and say, Interforce Tots operates with this many kids, this many adults, these are our funding streams, these many are in the, sorry, I'm going to get all the different kinds of funding sources mixed up, but, you know, the little kids get funding from here, and the middle, middle kids get funding from here, and like that, and that's the structure that will be used to fund Interforce Y.
Right, right. I appreciate that, and I understand where, um, the points that's being made. And I think maybe would also add some clarity. When you look at the services of children, and, um, there's a huge need, and our model is very, our model is very simple. Look at the child, and what is it that's, that's needed? For example, most children that have an IEP, which is an Individual Educational Plan, right? This is someone that may have some kind of, um, need, whether it related services, such as OTPT speech, these are services that's needed. Right now, within most of the communities that we service, there is no service that's being provided within the community. And because of that, a lot of them are not being served. This is a huge issue for the Department of Education, because they have children who have been, who are documented, thousands of them, that have been, that are documented, but they're not being serviced, because sometimes the service provider are not willing to go into that community, they don't want to be bothered, so they're not doing that. So with this space that we're having, we're looking to do the very same model that exists in Borough Park at Yale Vialda, where it's a one-stop shop. I know that, because I am actually the Director of Health Services for that agency, and an $87 million operation right there in Borough Park, that's operating, servicing that particular community, it is the very same model that I am looking to establish for the children from the community that I am reaching out to, in terms of having the, um, related services, the OTPT speech, all of the, um, the needs that they have, in terms of the conference room, having parental programs, having, these are all things that ultimately, if you are able to have the space, when the time allows it, you would be able to at least explore those possibilities. So for us, the children that you have, the children that you have within the, the children that you have within, in the program, we want to build out the program itself. We want to build it out, we want to, um, to continue just having the, the, uh, multi-purpose. One of the things that you ladies, um, and gentlemen had raised was, what happens with the children, um, that needs elevator going up to the, to the roof, um, with the elevator? That was one of the questions that was a part of...
Yeah, elevator to the roof.
To the roof, in terms of that. You have to have, um, large enough rooms. Our multi-purpose rooms that we have, we're looking to have that multi-purpose room where the children with special needs will be able to have access to, even though they may not go up on the roof. But when, within those large rooms, um, you can set it up where they're still getting, the, the idea is for them to be able to have certain free movement, just as they would on the roof, so, um...
That one's really a Department of Buildings question, but you should check with your architect, because the rule is that a disabled person has to have equivalent access to everything. So it's not okay, you have a child in a wheelchair who can't go out, and everybody else can. So you're going to need an elevator with access to the roof. This is a, you're really, the architect in the Buildings Department is not our purview, but just letting you know that, that won't be allowed, not by us, by the Department of Buildings and the code.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
It seems like we have been touching on pretty much, um, most of the things. The, we, there was a question that was asked about schedules. Describe the actual operations of facility, feature, each group, and morning arrival and departure, in terms of the arrival and departure.
I understood that, like, don't the kids go out? I know it, you said that Interforce Tots, the kids go out to the park?
That's correct.
Something like that? Won't kids go out to the park here? Or some, I don't know where there's a park, but won't they go outside here?
Yes, we have what's, um, one of the things that, that we do with the children, is that we have community exploration, um, so that they would actually take walks within the community. They would actually, um, well, it, there are various form of focus. In fact, right across the street, where we're located, Avenue Y, there is a Kid Zone, um, recreational sports complex, that's right across the street from where we're located. We intend on having a relationship with them, where our children can actually utilize their space, um, across the street. And that's one of the things that we are working on.
Okay, so if you could provide a schedule, like, I'm assuming that, you know, it's 700 kids, all 700 kids don't go outside at one time, so you must do it by classes or something. The reason this is relevant is because the environmental review didn't take that into account, and the impact of children outside on the sidewalk at all different times, they only looked at pedestrian circulation in the morning and in the evening, and in fact, there's lots more. And so the, the environmental consultant isn't here, so we had a lot...
He's here.
Sorry? Oh, he's here?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we can talk about that after, we can talk about that afterwards, but, um...
We do have a daily schedule that, um, and I had shared that with the team when they were with us on, on Friday, where, uh, a typical day, what it looks like, when a child arrives, let's say, from 7:00, 7:30, they, they, um, basically will have free play. Then by 8:30, they're eating breakfast. After breakfast, they have, um, Ms. Holland, why don't you come and describe it? This is our educational director for one of our program, and, um, maybe she can just bear witness to the, what a daily schedule is like.
State your name for the record?
State.
Nadine Holland, I'm Director of Education and Disabilities for Interforce Tots. In regards to your question, as far as the children, um, walking throughout the community, I understand that this is a manufacturing community, so that is one of our concerns that we address. Most of the children, when they enter in the morning, when they enter the building, they're dropped off by our bus system that we have in place. Um, they enter through, um, a different loading area than what normal traffic will enter the building from. Um, and at that time, they are escorted to their classrooms. Um, the classrooms are pretty much self-contained, they have bathrooms, they have lunch and everything in their classrooms. There is a rooftop play area that we would like to, um, implement at some point, so children will have access to that, so they wouldn't be walking around to get that gross motor activity. Also, there's the Spark Program and things that they can do indoors. And so when you see in the layout, those large meeting area spaces, those is, that those areas are designated for when it's raining, New York City weather, you see how it is outside today. So that's how the children will get that gross motor movement. As far as community walks and things of that nature, it'll be more... As far as community walks and things of that nature, it'll be more towards the residential side of Avenue Y, if you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, so not walking towards the industrial buildings.
So if you could, you know, for instance, maybe you've done this already, you probably have this already for your TOTS, right? How many?
Our schedule is staggered, so what we do, we do it by cluster age groups. The younger children are toddlers that are mobile. They go out in the morning periods right before their snack time, so that's early morning periods that are around 10:30, 11:00 AM. They go out for about 40 minutes and then they come in, they eat lunch. At that time, we have what is our Head Start Cluster, which is our three and four-year-olds will go and do their gross motor development. Because it's in 30-minute increments, we do it by pairs of classrooms. So we might have all even number classrooms go out rather than have all the children that are in our Head Start component go out at the same time. So we do work on a staggered schedule.
You also have a schedule of activities the students engage in during the day. I know we saw that when we visited. Can you give us some explanation or copies of that?
Yes. As far as the explanation, our infant toddler program, their schedule is, they take nap time earlier, so they're a little bit more ahead in the day as far as their lunch being served and their gross motor play activities. So at the time that they're taking nap, lunch is just being provided to the older age groups. So as one age group kind of finishes with activity, the next age group enters into that period of activity.
And I think that we saw those charts when you.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Didn't have to provide those charts.
Right. So following Head Start guidelines, as far as Eckers and Itters and child development, at 7:00 AM, which is when we plan for our center to open, the children will enter and they'll be held in what is called early room cluster groups. So they're divided by age in one classroom. During this time, we really don't see a lot of peak. It's really for parents who have to get to work by 8:00 AM. At 8:00 AM, our lead teachers come and pick up the students that are there and meet the rest of the classroom in their main classrooms, so the classroom that the child is assigned to. Between 8:00 to 11:00 AM is when the children partake in their classroom activities, circle time, reading books, and all the center time activities that we have laid out for them. Then they go into lunch, gross motor play, and then they have their nap time period. And then it kind of repeats itself in the evening hours with dismissal culminating at around 4:30 to 6:00.
That's. Okay, great. If you could write that down or provide that.
We'll have that for you.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, okay. Any other question?
I had a question yesterday that I had looked at the different classrooms in the building and I had a question about how you fit the 700 students and the 92 staff because I didn't really add up to that number of occupants. If someone could look at that.
Okay, and we'll do that. And our intention is to really redo the drawings and provide that with you so that you'll be able to see specifically, okay, how many children are in this room, how many adults we anticipate being in that room, based on your suggestion from yesterday. So we are working on that.
And according to the age group?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, yes.
So you have to state your name and come to the podium, so if Mr. Ellis has finished, otherwise we'll, okay. Yeah, yeah, no. So we have other questions. Wait a second, just a second. Let's finish with one. So if there are questions for Mr. Ellis before Ms. Simon comes up, that would be helpful. We just have to kind of go one at a time, otherwise it's too confusing.
I mean, I guess my question is really aimed at both you and also your representative. I think that actually this is, this seems like it's a wonderful program. It really does. And I really admire what you're trying to do for the community. I only hope it's multiplied throughout the city. I really do. However, this special permit is really focused on the idea that you're locating in a manufacturing district that actually might have some sort of unforeseen hazards that might affect the children. So the findings are really geared towards ensuring the children's adequate separation from the negative effects on the community as well as their safety. And so what I would like to see in the paperwork, this is why it's also aimed at your representative, is a discussion that really focuses in on the findings and focuses in on how the children here, however many you're going to have served here, are protected by the manufacturing district. And so you're going to discuss how they arrive, how they're protected when they get there, and that's why you get into different, you know, conversations about traffic and modal splits. It's really all towards talking about the children's safety in an industrial area as opposed to in an area where the school would be as if right and we would never be asking these questions. You would never come before a body like this.
I understand. Thank you for that clarity. I understand.
So really, to me, it's almost, you've gone into such incredible detail. I think these answers are actually going to be easy for you in comparison.
That is, you know, you speak directly to what is the backbone of DOH when they come into our facility at the forefront, safety for the children. And I do understand, just based on what you just shared with me regarding the continuity of care and safety for the children from the beginning till the end and how we'll protect that. We'll have a response back to that. I have clarity on that now. I appreciate that.
And some of it is, which wasn't mentioned, but I saw in the EAS, your opposite automotive uses, you know? So that's the other thing. You have all these kids, they're little, they're running around, they're hard to control without leashes, you know? So how do you make sure that a tow truck or backing up from the automotive station and all that isn't interfering? That's the kind of thing. So you should be talking about how your monitors are going to be there, how many kids do a monitor. When you go outside for these great walks, for example, which you should do, how many people will accompany the kids to make sure nobody runs off? Maybe you use those little stroller things? I mean, I don't know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We do. Fantastic.
To echo what's just been said, but also you've got, you've got another use in that building and you've got, you know, retro fitness. And you haven't spoken or given us indication how you intend to sort of separate yourself out from predominantly adult population that's in, you know, an area of the building that you're sharing. So, you know, how will you, how will those kids interact with people coming into retro fitness? So, you know, not only the exterior of what's happening in the manufacturing district, but you've got, you know, something else to consider within the building as well.
Right.
So, you know, how do you plan on keeping the kids safe in that regard?
I appreciate that. One of the things that we have done, and I'm not sure if you are privileged to the drawings of the first floor, we have complete separation. We do not use the same entrance as retro fitness.
Very far away.
We are not, our children are not, that's one of the things that we have to make sure that we're in compliance with is constant protection. Anyone that comes in contact or excessive contact with our children have to be cleared by Department of Investigation. They have to, so in terms of adults walking through the building and coming in contact with our children, that is forbidden. We do not have any interactions with retro fitness. They have separate entrances and no one comes on the side of where we are. And I'm sure, I'll make sure that in the next drawing that you receive, that that will be spelled out and be very clear to you. But there's no, the side where we are, there is no interaction whatsoever with retro fitness, none.
And on that side, you've got your parking area. Is that parking area used by retro fitness? So you'll have, you'll have traffic, you'll have retro fitness people walking past your, you know, your front door, so to speak. So I'm just concerned that, you know, are there cameras that you have on the parking area? Presumably, you would have, you know, parents possibly picking up their kids who would be pulling into that lot as well. So, you know, you do, although you've, you know, physically separated the population, there are instances in which that population will mix. And I'm just wondering if you've taken into that, taken that into account and been able to mitigate anything that might happen.
I agree with everything that you said. Just one piece is I don't agree with. They will not, at no time will retro fitness population mix with our children because of where they're located and we, it's almost like having our neighbors next door to where we are currently. They do not come into our facility, even though they may walk past, but we do not, when our kids get off the bus, they'll be going directly into our facility and there is, just as we do now, because that's part of DOH's regulations, you must provide security and secure, just have safety for the children. So at no time, our children will be intermingling with retro fitness or anyone else that's not really on our staff or a family coming into the building. Once they come in, only those who have been cleared by DOI or DOE fingerprinting and are part of our agency will have, will be coming in contact with them. So there's no co-mingling or mixture at all.
No, I think what Commissioner Henson is getting at is the sidewalk, not the interior of the space. We're sure that you have good security on your space. It really is just that, and there's two parts of this special permit requirement. One is that we're to look at making sure the children are safe and the other is to make sure that the impact of the school doesn't disturb ongoing businesses. So it's actually twofold. So when you talk about the people who are going to the gym, who park in the parking lot and then they walk down the sidewalk at the same time, very easily, as the time when children are brought out to go for a walk, for example. So if you could just, and maybe a lot of kids are coming out at once or you're loading the bus, unloading the bus quickly, and so the kids are on the sidewalk, maybe if you could just talk about sort of how you deal with sort of staging kids on the sidewalk. So, I mean, I've seen schools where the kids just like literally stand up against, close to the wall of the building and then everybody has to hold hands and then nobody's allowed to leave until somebody says go, right? And that's a way of keeping the, sort of the ducks in order, you know?
Right.
Something like that. Just talk to that issue.
No problem.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Ellis? Dr. Ellis?
Thank you.
Okay, nothing for, okay, so Ms. Simons, if you would. Thank you very much.
Okay. What we're supposed to do is, there are many, as I was saying yesterday, and I, your staff has communicated with my client and with me, what we're supposed to do is do a complete submission with the revised EAS, with the DOT and the DOB conclusions and with the revised facts and findings that include these kinds of concerns that you're talking today. We'd like to submit and all the questions that you had on Monday that I wrote down and that you passed. And as a matter of fact, those were the questions that were passed out at the tour, so.
Okay, so before we get to this and submission, there was a lot of discussion here. So the discussion sort of broadened or clarified some of those questions and some of the issues. So to the extent you didn't take notes, if you could listen to the video and really hear the questions and respond to them, so we don't have to go back and ask those questions again. Because as we were exchanging, we were clarifying kind of what we need in order to get comfort. So that might have gone a little in a different direction or a little tighter from the questions that were presented in writing to you during the tour. Plus, yeah, so I think that would be helpful. Plus, you have, you know, the knowledge of the school of Dr. Ellis and the school's educational director to really hone in on the questions. And then actually, we do need to speak to the environmental consultant to make sure, is that person still here? No, yes, no? Yes?
My understanding was we were going to present all this together, that he's not speaking today.
No, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to defend anything. We just want to make clear that he understands what our problems are, what the open issues are, so we don't have to do this again. The idea again is to limit this to as few hearings as possible, right? And get all the answers in paper and then be done, okay? So because we're trying to help you here, but we also, we have our obligations to put together a case.
David.
Hi.
Hi, David Cuff from AECOM.
Thank you for coming. I just want to tell you that I thought your EAS was excellent.
Oh, thank you.
And the questions really are, I was able to ask questions because I understood so well what you said.
Oh, thank you.
Usually you don't understand what the EAS says, so you can't ask questions. But one of the things that's come out as we've discussed the, especially understanding better, Interforce TOTS, is some of the assumptions that you made in terms of population were based on Interforce TOTS, for example, being occupied with, what is it, a thousand kids at the same time, something like that. I understand there's actually, that kind of occupancy isn't the case. So perhaps you and Dr. Ellis and the school's director of education could talk together to make sure you've got the right set of assumptions.
Okay.
On which to base all your modal splits and so on.
Okay.
Okay? And that goes for the next thing where we didn't know and you didn't know that, for instance, students go for walks during the day. That's going to have an impact on pedestrian study, I think.
Well, I mean, the pedestrian study is based on the peak hour, the two peak hours. And so our understanding is that when the kids are walking outside, it's only a portion of the kids. So we are studying sort of the worst case when all, when the kids are arriving, so that's when the most pedestrians are being generated, when they're leaving. So that's when, so during those two peak hours, following this secret technical manual, you know, we didn't find any.
I see, okay.
Impacts.
Okay. Is that, do you want to?
I know Rory has some comments or some outstanding issues, I believe, with DEP. And then also the construction, there's the, it's the.
Construction health and safety.
Yes, construction health and safety plan is still outstanding, which, and that needs to be submitted and reviewed.
Always all those issues.
That has to be done before we can, you know, this out, so.
Right, and so there's also air quality and noise analysis that's been requested by DEP, right?
Well, I don't know if it's been requested by DEP, but we can.
Yes, but you can.
We can clarify that.
Okay, yeah.
And also items like noise attenuation are things that could and should readily be folded into the statement of findings in terms of shielding the facts of the, you know, manufacturing district. Because, you know, we may assume that the, there's loud uses and that this is a school and so therefore what, how, you know, there's probably going to be DAF radiance and things like that. And those can be folded into the statement of facts.
Statement of facts, so that's for Ms. Simon.
That's for Ms. Simon, so it's not for you, but it needs to.
Right. I mean, the issue now, we're kind of speaking to two people simultaneously, but the issue is that you're doing the secret analysis, which is what you should be doing, and the statement of facts has to pick up the salient issues that you find and incorporate them into statement of fact to make the findings of the special permit that in fact, this is not going to interfere with ongoing uses and will be safe for the children. So noise, air quality, all of those other, traffic, crash data, all that stuff has to fit into that.
In looking at your EAS land use study, I had some questions about, you have this huge community, community facility space across the street on Avenue Y. And when I look at the photos, or public facility, public institution, it's color-coded blue?
That's the Coney Island Yard?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, sorry.
When I look at the photos, it says used cars for sale.
Okay, so you're saying the map doesn't match.
It should reflect the actual existing uses.
Okay.
And can you detail those a little bit more on your, you know, your radius diagram, on your land use map?
More detail on the land use map.
Right, because I was very confused in looking at the photos and then looking at your land use map, it didn't seem to connect.
Maybe what would be useful is just on the block on which the school is located to give the names of each establishment so that we know this one is automotive and this is residential, as opposed to an R or an M to understand what the actual uses are. Because the automotive. are. Because the automotive things were what concerned me the most in terms of that block. And I, this probably doesn't rise to the level of a seeker review, but if you could look at how the interface between the children and the kinds of automotive uses, I mean, what I'm concerned about is cars being brought in, tow trucks, at the same time as school buses are there, or children are there, and how, how you, maybe sort of the potential danger to the children might be addressed, which you could suggest, by monitors or something like that, that's all. Or a drive-up zone, I think that's already proposed, right?
Right.
A drive-up zone for the school buses, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay?
That also sort of concerned me. You just said that you'd taken a look at when kids are sort of moving around on the sidewalk at peak hours. And I think it's been expressed that kids probably during the entire day are out, would be at any given moment probably taking a walk of some kind in a group. So, if you can address how that can be handled with all of these, you know, sort of manufacturing uses that are going to be going on all day long, it's not just the peak hour of like 7:30, you've got a bunch of kids. You may have 30 kids taking a walk at, you know, 1:30 in the afternoon, and that might be when, you know, every used car gets delivered to, you know, the place across the street for service. So, I think you have to really take a broader look at exactly what's happening around the school and how the children might be interacting with those uses.
Okay.
And then, the other thing in terms of the noise levels and the air quality levels, what I understood from what I read in the EAS, the noise levels are significant, so there would need to be a step down in DBA of something like 28 on the interior. But what does that do for the exterior roof play? So, kids are playing, I mean, and that may just be the way city kids play, right? That we're all used to playing at 75 or 85 DBA or something like that when we're kids on the roof. And if that's the case, so much for the life of, I guess, but there's probably some rule about what's safe for children play, and maybe an attenuator or something around the roof enclosure would handle that. And ditto for air quality, because there's a stationary source nearby, a spray booth. And if it turns out that air quality at the roof level is not good, that maybe there would be something scrubbers, I mean, I don't know the technical solution, but something that would address that potential risk to children at the roof play area. And what else?
There's also a question about the parking.
Oh, yes.
How many spots are there now, and how are they going to provide 20 more spaces? I think we got an explanation when we went there, but I think it has to be elaborated on.
I think, no, actually, AECOM submitted a response to, that was a DOT comment about the parking spaces, that there won't be 20 parking spaces provided.
Correct.
And just if you could incorporate that response into your EAS, but essentially...
Yeah, well, we were going to modify the parking discussion.
It wasn't going to affect the overall parking requirements in the area. It's not a lot of parking demand, because most of the teachers will arrive by public transportation, right?
Correct.
And I think you also are going to answer how the intended parking is actually accomplished. I don't think that was ever really...
That's not a question for the EAS, though. That would be more...
Yeah, that's the team. Because in our discussion, we hadn't really, you guys hadn't really figured that out yet, so...
I mean, I think another part, which is really unrelated to this application, but does go to the owner who is responsible for the PCE. The PCE is currently not in compliance. Parking's supposed to be 40 spaces, not 38. So, the owner of your property needs to bring this into compliance. Unfortunately, you get sort of stuck up in there. So, they need to reach out to the landlord and say, "The fitness studio has to get their proverbial act together with respect to the parking spaces."
Currently being worked on, actually, it's all for me.
Okay, great. Are you the owner?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Okay. I think that's unbelievably it. Are there any speakers on this item? Everyone out there, more or less spoke, so. Okay, so, it's a big task. I don't know how much time is needed, so it's okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Simons, you want to please come to the podium and state your name?
Emily Simons. We'd like to submit by February 24th, and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, submit by, wait, I have my chart here. I'm a little, it's a little late, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm a little bit, but we'd like to do, submit by February 10th and have a hearing on the 24th. We have a time constraint, which I think we've been talking about. We need to open the school in September, it's required.
So, that submission schedule is okay, but in the interest of really getting this done, if you would submit as soon as you can, whatever you have as you get it, we'll take a look and it's, and issue comments, because I suspect we'll have comments. And the sooner you can turn those around, then we would be done by the submission deadline on the 10th for a hearing for our decision. And we could potentially vote and close if everything's in order. We're trying to help you get this done, so please be responsive to the staff comments, okay?
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, we've got a submission on the 10th and a hearing on the 24th.
Right.
This concludes the public hearing for January 13, 2015. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
It's a great project, we're just sorry you're going through this, but you know this.
Questions about the submissions?